All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The second item be the approval of the January ninth, twenty twenty minutes. Might take a second to look them over and see if there are any corrections or additions.
You have two.
And I don't think they were in your packet. They're probably here on your desk. Motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of last month's.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Garrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Stone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The next item of business would be the approval of the February agenda. Are there any changes to the agendas? I think we might be juggling some things around as far as order here. I'll explain that here in a minute. Item D would be items, I guess we need to approve, we need to approve the agenda? Motion? I have a motion to approve the agendas as set before us here.
No second.
David. Motion by Mr. Best.
Yep.
Second by Mr. Wiseman.
Right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've got approval of the agenda. Brings us to items for postponement or withdrawal. Anything, Joe?
Yeah, we have one addition to item D under new businesses postponed. That's on the agenda. We have the addition of item A under old business, DMA in two thousand nineteen dash fifty Georgetown Scott County TRTF. It's postponed until next month.
Oh, postponed. What else you say is postponed?
Well, item E.
Oh, E.
Under new business is postponed.
Yeah. But there was, was an additional one?
Yeah, the addition is item A under old business.
Okay, I thought you said, I thought I heard D there for a minute. I was going to surely not. All right. Anything eligible for consent agenda?
There are three items. You want to vote on the items to postpone or withdraw first?
We can? Oh, the.
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve the items for postponement and withdrawal.
Motion.
Made by Mr. Best, second by Mr. Garrett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Got approval on the items for postponement and withdrawal. The consent agenda is.
We have three items under new business. Items C, D, and F are all eligible.
C, D, and F. All right, I'll go over these quickly. If there's anybody that wants to hear these, just let me know. And we'll probably. First item is C, Oser Paint and Flooring Development. That's PDP twenty twenty dash oh four. It's a preliminary development plan to construct a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot paint and flooring store located at one hundred Trackside Road. Is there anybody here that wants to hear that application? Or is opposed to it? All right. Do we want to go on and approve them individually, you think? All right, well. I have a motion to approve that application by consent?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Wiseman.
I second that.
Second by Mr. Stone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. If there's somebody here to represent Oser Paint and Flooring Development, please see Charlie up here.
I need your signature.
And that brings us to D. Which is number. PDP twenty twenty dash oh two. Village at Georgetown. This is a preliminary development plan for a seventy-eight-unit residential development located east of McClellan Circle and south of East Main Street Extended and north of Lemons Mill Road. Is there anybody here to speak for or against that tonight or wants to hear it? Is eligible for consent? Seen none, I would take a motion to accept that application by consent.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Garrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I would say motion passes and if there's somebody here to represent the Village of Georgetown, see Charlie? All right, that brings us to.
You can't come in here.
Said the other one was.
Item F.
Item F. That's PDP dash twenty twenty dash oh five Georgetown Storage. A preliminary development plan to construct a fifteen-hundred-sixty-square-foot storage building for J and L Pharmacy. It's located at the property adjoining seven oh five South Broadway, which is J and L Pharmacy and is to the south of it. Anybody here to, that wants to hear that application? Seen none, I would take a motion that we accept.
I move that we accept that number oh five.
By consent?
Second. By consent.
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Stone, seconded by Mr. Wiseman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Goodness gracious.
Rule that. Passed and if somebody's here for Georgetown Storage, which I think they are right there.
Keep it square and it'll probably perform for you.
All right. That brings us to. Like one thing I'm gonna try to get out of the way before we get too far along. We have a planning commission member that's served his eight years. He started in February of two thousand twelve. Tonight will be his last meeting. We want to recognize him for his service. And I would quickly read this resolution if I could. This is resolution related to the appreciation of Frank Wiseman's service and leadership as a member of the Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission. On the occasion Frank Wiseman's rotation off the Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission, it is essential that his fellow commission members express their appreciation for his service and leadership. Community relies upon qualified concerned citizens to oversee vital local government services. Frank exemplifies the involved citizen in whom the community must be able to place its trust. Frank has served this community and the P and Z organization since February of twenty twelve. He has been faithful in attendance, always engaged in the proceedings, providing serious, well-considered questions and opinions. His leadership has strengthened the organization and the community it serves. He frequently has been the voice for preserving the traditional community that we cherish. His fellow commission members on behalf of the P and Z staff and the community they serve acknowledge and by this resolution formally enter upon the permanent record their gratitude to Frank Wiseman for his act of service and support as commission member and further extend to Frank our best wishes for his future endeavors. And I would accept the motion that we pass this resolution.
I move that.
So moved by James Stone and I'd be happy to second that motion. I think the two of us probably served around Frank as long as anybody and we thank you very much for your support.
But you need to, but you need to take your vote.
I probably should take a vote on that. I think, I think it's unanimous.
It's still in doubt Frank, so just hold on a minute.
Think I jumped the gun there, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Frank? Thank you for your service. Take it everybody's here for a couple of things tonight. Probably the next thing we need to do is swearing in of.
Yes.
Anybody that wishes to speak tonight.
Everyone signed in to speak, if you stand, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirming the statement you're to make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess our first item of business will be in old business and then will be item B, PDP twenty nineteen dash fifty-one. Bluegrass Campground.
Thank you. The, the application before you is a proposal for eighty-nine RV camping sites. The applicant's also proposing a small water park, ten cabins, and some other recreational facilities, mini golf, basketball courts, et cetera. The project site is at two six nine Connector Road. The current zoning on the property is B two, which is our highway commercial district. It allows for a wide variety of uses. And the surrounding properties are zoned either A one, B two, or R two. The A one is our agricultural zoning district. The R two is our medium-density residential district. The site is a little over twenty-one acres in size and the applicant is proposing developing the site in two phases. The first phase, which would contain the RV camping sites, is about fifteen point six acres and then the remaining acreage would be for the cabins, the water park, mini golf, and the associated parking. The proposed access to the site is from Connector Road, although they do, and I'll show you here in a minute, they do have a secondary sort of exit point that they're proposing that would allow vehicles to get to Paris Pike, both of which are state-controlled roads. So we've got the aerial imagery here just to allow us to get a sense of, of the area we're looking at. We've got Paris Pike here. Runs roughly east-west and then Connector Road is right here. And this area that I've outlined in blue is roughly the project site. You can see the applicant has the dealership here sort of closer to Paris Pike. And then they've, since I guess the aerial imagery was taken, they've constructed some space, some spots for RVs to be stored as well as some mini storage units there in the back. So this, this is the area that we're talking about. And this is the preliminary development plan for the first phase of their project site. So we've got Connector Road here that runs along the western side of the property. Their, their entrance is located, located at the northern side of the site. And then they've got drive aisles by which they would access the RV parking spaces. They do have their check-in, their proposed check-in here located off of Connector Road. So most of the vehicles that would enter the site would, would use this entrance. They do have, as I mentioned before, there's a secondary sort of exit point so that vehicles can get out to Paris Pike. Just gives the driver some options depending on which direction they're looking to go. I did hear back from the fire department. The fire department is okay with, you know, the drive aisles as well as the cabin spacing. We can talk about that in a second. I found that the, the site met all of our requirements as far as landscaping and screening requirements. As you can see here in phase one in particular, there's a significant number of trees that are proposed to screen, to help screen the site from Connector Road as well as adjoining properties. As far as parking spaces, the applicant did leave enough space sort of in the campsite areas for vehicles that might be brought with RVs to be parked as well. So I don't anticipate there being any, any parking problems with, with the campsites themselves. They do have two spots for, for the RVs to leave their sanitary sewer waste, if you will. And they also have plenty of interior VUA parking or landscaped areas, rather. Other features of phase one, the applicant is requesting two waivers with this phase. The first of which would be to not construct a sidewalk here along the eastern side of Connector Road. Typically, we would require the applicant to do so. In this case, the, the topography poses a serious challenge on this side of the road as well as the presence of some utility lines that make it very difficult, be, very difficult and costly for the applicant to, to attempt to relocate if that would even be possible. So outside of those, those two items, they do meet all of our requirements for phase one. If you remember, I had this slide a couple of months ago. This kind of just shows some of the difficulty in trying to fit a sidewalk in the right-of-way for Connector Road in this area. I took some points where I looked at some of the slopes in the area. As you can see down here, sort of, sort of on the southern end of their site, you're looking at about an eighteen, eighteen to nineteen percent grade. And then even here at the top where it gets a little flatter, it's, it's still about eight percent. So, you know, that would, it would take some serious work to, to put a sidewalk in the existing right-of-way. If we talk about expanding that right-of-way, you know, that's when you get into potentially having to blast that rock wall and move, and move the utility lines. This, this sheet shows us a little bit more detail as far as phase two. Once again, phase two meets nearly, nearly all of our requirements. The only area where it, where it doesn't completely meet our requirements is, I guess in relation to this, this landscaping buffer here along the eastern side of the property. Typically, that landscaping buffer would be right along the property line. The applicant, and it's not something that the applicant constructed, there was an existing paved driveway along that property line going back to a previous owner. And the applicant didn't want to, you know, sort of tear out an existing, you know, paved driveway just to move it over. And, and they were granted variances on that with the, with the dealership location as well. So they are requesting a waiver to basically have the landscaping that would be required, just keep it on, on the west side of, of the driveway. I thought that was also a reasonable request. But as you can see here from their plan, these two phases would connect. The vehicles could, could come in and then pull down, you know, sort of south-southwestward or eastern, in a southeastern direction and access the, the parking spots here. This is the location where, where the water park would be. There's a little spot up here for, for mini golf. And then there's ten cabins here that could be, that could be rented out. The, the uses that aren't permitted by right, you know, on this site were approved by the Georgetown Board of Adjustment back in October at their regularly scheduled meeting. So as far as the, the uses themselves, those, those were approved several months ago. The, the applicant did have a traffic impact study done for the site. The traffic study, as I, as I outline in the staff report, did recommend that the Connector Road entrance be sort of the primary entrance to the site. There's several reasons for that. The, the two primary reasons are it has a low, Connector Road has a lower volume of traffic than Paris Pike does. And then the second being that people wishing to make a left turn into the site would have to cross fewer lanes of traffic in order to make a left into the site than if they'd been using a primary entrance off of Connector, or off of Paris Pike. The, the traffic study did also recommend road improvements to the Connector Road entrance to make it safer. So in this sort of drawing, north would be to the right. So this is, this is the entrance to the site and the applicant is proposing, as the traffic study recommended, sort of a deceleration lane for people wanting to make a right turn in. So the slower-moving, you know, RV vehicles would have space to get over and would have less impact on, on the through traffic that would be traveling north on Connector Road. And then the applicant's also proposing a left-turn lane for southbound traffic on Connector Road. That was also recommended by the traffic study, once again, to allow, you know, slower-moving vehicles that are looking for an opportunity to turn left to sort of get out of the regular flow of southbound traffic and, and provide for a safer environment for them to turn without causing delays. As you can also see here, the applicant is proposing sort of two entrance lanes. That's basically allows for them to have some stacking for, for vehicles looking to check in while not prohibiting other vehicles from pulling into the site. So we don't envision there being any conflicts where, you know, vehicles are backing up onto Connector Road. That doesn't, that doesn't seem likely. I think at the last meeting, you all had requested the applicant provide an exhibit showing how vehicles could use that sort of secondary exit onto Paris Pike. So they have provided that. So this is part of the phase two of the development here with the, the parking that we looked at earlier. So vehicles could come and then turn south on that existing driveway and then get out to that Paris Pike and exit. So this could be a convenient way for vehicles looking to leave the site and maybe get onto I seventy-five going south or to come downtown. This would be a little bit easier way for them to do that without making a left out onto Connector Road. Vehicles traveling north, northbound or looking to get onto I seventy-five north or, you know, towards the, the shopping area around Walmart. You know, they could take a right out, out onto Connector Road and, and access that area. I went over these items from the traffic impact study just a minute ago, so I'll skip over that. Ultimately, I am recommending approval of the preliminary development plan. There's the three waivers that I, that I mentioned before. I think all three requests are reasonable. I have, I also recommended ten conditions in addition to, to the waivers. Most of these are, are standard conditions that we would include on any, any development plan, things like complying with all state, local, and federal regulations. There are a couple here toward the end that are a little bit different and as far as I know, the applicant is agreeable to all of them. Condition eight deals with some canopy requirements that are sort of leftover from the dealership site. The applicant has indicated that they're aware of that and will comply. Condition nine, you know, we will look for the applicant to, for all elements of each phase of the development plan to comply with our regulations independently. And from my review of the, the preliminary development plan, it seems like that's the case. And then the last condition is just that the applicant will need to seek approval from KYTC for any road improvements that they, that they intend to make on Connector Road. And we would view those road improvements as a, or approval of, for them to make those road improvements as a condition of approval. I don't, I don't know that this would be as viable a project if they're not able to obtain KYTC approval. And that's all that I had.
Questions from the commission, from Matt? Seen none? We want to hear from the applicant?
All right, well, we've got a crowd tonight. I don't think they're here for me, but we've been here before. You guys have heard this. But it'll be news to all you guys that haven't heard about it. So this is a Bluegrass RV Campground. Pretty neat attraction, I think, that will be going in. They're off of Connect Road and Paris Pike four sixty-nine. See which direction do I go?
Four sixty.
There we go. Okay. So phase one, as you mentioned, is going to be a luxury RV campground where there's going to be a spot for the RVs to camp as well as a picnic area, fire pit area, room to play outdoor games such as cornhole or hillbilly golf, something like that. But really to make it even more of an attraction, it comes along with phase two to provide kind of some amenities for the people coming to see the site. And that's where phase two comes in, where there would be a water park, mini golf cabins, just something, a really family-friendly, fun place where you can come for, you know, not have to travel too far, also would bring people into Georgetown as far as to come to the restaurants, just see the local economy and just different things going on here. So just a little bit of background, you guys are all familiar with it, but we were here back in November. We had the first alternative in which staff also recommended approval. Commission engineer was in favor of the improvements to Connector Road, which would allow really the, the RVs and different vehicles coming in not to inhibit the traffic because they'd have a turn lane right and left to get off of the road. On this, on this alternative, we had the main entrance and exit onto Connector Road and, as well as the improvements to Connector Road. Based on that plan, however, there was some concerns with the traffic on, all of the traffic coming in and off of Connector Road. So, and you wanted some more information as far as a full traffic study. So you asked us to look at alternate access to include off of four sixty-nine as well as providing the full traffic study. So with the second submittal, which was in January, we provided a full traffic study as well as an alternate plan that included entrance, main entrance off of four sixty-nine. However, this plan was not, planning staff was not in favor of for multiple different reasons. One, just having the main entrance and exit off of four sixty-nine really is more, much more hazardous than Connector Road having to turn across two lanes. That was one of the main reasons. The planning commission engineer was also not in favor of this plan. But in the workshop meeting leading up to that, we provided, we came up with a third alternative that, that meet, that really met both the commission's concern as well as the planning staff's concern having the entrance back on Connector Road, but an exit onto four sixty-nine, which allows really the safest traffic movements as far as the majority of traffic that would be coming and leaving, only having to make a right turn and not have to cross any traffic.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think, I think it's highway four sixty, isn't it?
Oh, four sixty.
I think it says four sixty. I don't, four sixty-nine might be confusing some people.
Paris Pike. So, but this one, the, the traffic engineer that did the traffic study does support this as far as being a safer traffic pattern, having it be from Connector Road and exit. However, from this one, just because that alternative three really we developed from the workshop meeting until the, the planning commission meeting last in, in January, to really to allow staff proper time to review it. They recommend that we postpone that once again so they have proper time to address it. So that brings us here to today where we have. Okay. To, to today with the third submittal where we still, we've, the traffic study is still valid. We have an alternative plan now. Planning staff is again recommending approval with how we have presented this. Commission engineer is in favor again of having the main entrance on four sixty, on four sixty-nine, as well as it's just a safer traffic flow with the entrance on Connector, exit to four sixty. And then also with the improvements to Connector Road, this is something that I think is, one of the best things about this project is the fact that the state isn't planning on doing anything, any improvements to Connector Road anytime soon. And so this is a way to actually improve the traffic conditions on four sixty. Because all in all, there's only about eighty-nine parking spots, so only about eighty-nine vehicles that would actually be adding. So the trips generated is very minimal and it's not traffic that's going to be coming in day in, day out. It's going to be people coming in for a few days at a time. So comparison to any other type of development such as a bank, restaurant, or shopping center, this actually is probably the least amount of traffic that could be generated from this type of development, this size. So again, just low traffic generated, I think is a positive, but a big one is the improvements to Connector Road, which I know is a big, big issue around here. So I wanted to address the sidewalk. Frank, you had mentioned sidewalks in the meeting on the workshop. So I went out there just to take some pictures again. Matt addressed it pretty well, but here's some visuals to really see what's going on there. For one, there's no track, there's no sidewalk coming from the Shell Station on that side. As you can see, it was a ditch line kind of running right along there where you might put one. That's looking back towards four sixty. When we turn, turn the corner, you can see that four or five-foot drop-off where the, where the bedrock is and creates quite a bit, quite a big challenge to put a sidewalk there. And then going a little bit further down, actually kind of shows, I thought this showed that sidewalk really would be much better off on the other side of the road than on that side where you can still see the slopes, still very steep, trees there. It's actually quite, quite a bit more flat on the other side of the road. And then the other, the other issue we mentioned was there is that gas line. This kind of shows those little yellow flags going along there where that gas line is. So there's just multiple things. I mean, we'd love to put a sidewalk in, but it's just making it quite a, quite a big hardship for them to have to overcome that, moving a gas line and blasting rock for a sidewalk for a road that a lot of people probably wouldn't want to walk on. for a road that a lot of people probably wouldn't want to walk on. So just in summary, again, with this third alternative, the main entrance is going to be from Connector Road and exit onto 460. It's, it's a low-traffic-volume gener, generating development, and it is going to provide an improvement to Connector Road with a right turn, deceleration lane, and an improvement with a left turn. So that really allows traffic not, not to have to stop. It can continue moving like it is. I don't think I have anything else. No, that last one was just showing that turn line exhibited as well, what that would look like.
Questions for the applicant from the planning commission? Anybody? All right, I guess we're ready to hear from, anybody here to speak on this from the public? People gathered here tonight? All right. Any other questions here? Anybody need, need any more information or ready to vote on this one?
Is there a possibility that will be a sidewalk on either side? Is that what we're thinking, maybe?
At this point?
I mean, that's depending on when, how developments happen. I mean, you guys might be able to...
I don't think...
Yeah, I mean, it's a state road.
Yeah.
So if we were to get a sidewalk, it would have to be on their property. So, either side.
I guess my one question would be, is it possible for people walking down the street? I don't know if they could walk through that development or not, if that would be discouraged or, I don't know how, I don't even know how that would work.
Well, I can speak on behalf of the campground. It's not going to be...
If you could step up here, please.
If I understand your question, can pedestrians walk on the campground's side down Connector Road?
Yes.
Excuse me, one second. Were you sworn in earlier by any chance? Oh, good. Okay, go right ahead.
You might, you might state your name and just for the record.
I represent the campground and Bluegrass RV. We're, we're not talking about totally enclosing this campground where, you know, it would be totally fenced in. So the landscaping would allow someone to walk down Connector Road.
Right.
It's just that side of the road is pretty treacherous as it is now.
Right.
But we would not oppose that.
No, but, I mean, we've, I think all of us have been out there and we've noticed there's a fair amount of foot traffic on Connector Road now, and there's, there is no sidewalk. There, there's some gravel and some blacktop where there's an access road on the far side.
Most of the foot traffic, as I have observed, is from our development toward the Walmart end and not, not in the immediate area where, where we're talking about.
Yeah.
But we would allow that.
Other questions? If not, I'd, I would accept the motion. Yes or no?
I move that we go ahead and accept.
All right, I've got a motion by James to accept this application.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wiseman. We don't need a roll call vote, do we?
No, sir.
Just a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? See, motion, motion passes and somebody's here to represent Bluegrass Campground, see Charlie, and fill out the paperwork. All right, I guess that brings us now to, I think we're going to go out of order slightly, correct?
Yeah, the next item on the agenda is Rita Jones' plat, but in order for that to be approved...
Considered.
You would have to...
We need to go first to new, new business item A, which is the FSP 2020-07 Sharp Property.
Yes. Okay, this is a request to amend the preserved area at the Sharp, at the Willowbrook Cluster This subdivision was approved in the late 90s, early 2000s, I believe, as a, as a cluster subdivision. Cluster subdivisions are allowed in, in the A-1 district as long as you maintain the, the five-acre density. You can reduce the lot size down to, currently down to 1.3, 1.75 to 2 acres for a cluster lot. The remaining acreage has to be in, set aside in a preserved area that can't be further subdivided, has to, has to be left contiguous in one piece and farmable essentially in perpetuity. At the time of this cluster, this is a, basically just the location of it. At the time of the Willowbrook Cluster approv, first approval, we allowed the preserved area to be in 25-acre tracts. This, this cluster, although it was amended over time, eventually it ended up with two preserved tracts, one 50 acres in size and one 25 acres in size. The 25-acre, well, they both had a, had a dwelling credit with them. Typically, the preserved area is set aside as one piece with one dwelling credit, so somebody could build a, build a house on it and farm it. This subdivision was approved overall and developed in phases. So the first phase included the cluster lots here at the, at the entrance. The second phase was in the back. The second phase was never developed subdivision, or the land eventually went into some type of receivership or bankruptcy. The property that was set aside for Phase Two of the cluster lots was purchased by Rita Jones, and she came to the planning commission a couple of months ago and asked to subdivide the Phase Two of cluster lots into five-acre lots, so to abandon the rest of the subdivision essentially. Abandon, abandon the idea of continuing the cluster subdivision and just do the clust, the area of cluster lots in five-acre lots. You approved four five-acre lots on the piece that she purchased, which was this piece in the center. The existing road for Willowbrook, tees and cul-de-sacs, but it dead-ends basically just short of her property, but there's, there's dedicated right of way to, to the property she bought. So she has access, she can continue that road and do those five, four, five-acre lots, which the planning commission approved. Well, for reasons that I'll let them get into, they're wanting to give her a little extra land to, to plat a fifth lot in order to close out the bankruptcy. They came to us with a plat. We told them, you can't do that because you can't subdivide the preserved acreage, which this was the 25-acre preserved piece up here, this was the 50-acre, second preserved track in the back. So they wanted to split off four acres from that, give it to Rita Jones, kind of close out their bankruptcy dealings and move on. Well, since they can't subdivide the preserved area, their only option was to come back to planning commission, ask to either amend or move the preserved tract. Because of the number of lots and the overall acreage that had been developed, they needed to maintain at least 75 acres in preserved to cover, to, to maintain the density requirement overall to satisfy these, this cluster, these cluster lots that were already platted. So what they're asking to do, and they, they kind of came through with a couple of different options. We advised them a little bit on how they could, they could technically meet our, our cluster regulations currently. And what they are asking to do is to move this total, this 50-acre preserved tract to the north, to some farmland, farmland they own, to the north of the existing cluster lots. But the, but it doesn't, it doesn't currently touch the cluster lots. One of the current requirements of the cluster subdivisions is that the preserve needs to be contiguous to the cluster, the clust, the lots that are platted, the cluster lots that are platted. And that's, one, to kind of keep the farm intact, so you don't create a long kind of flag lot and capture some preserved land that's way off, you know, not in the vicinity of the cluster lots. It provides a kind of buffer for the, the cluster subdivision, so the, the remaining farmland isn't impacted by those lots. You know, it's kind of, the impact is absorbed by the farm that's actually creating the situation. So what they are attempting to do is move it to the north, but in order to touch and be contiguous with the existing cluster lots, are also going to purchase a sliver of this farm that's on the north side, north side of the, the cluster lots themselves. And I can't, the Kits Miller property. So they're, they're incorporating this 50 acres plus a sliver of the Kits Miller property to touch the corner of the existing cluster lots. This isn't an ideal situation. Typically, once a, once a cluster subdivision is developed and platted, we don't like to see things monkeyed with, just because people purchase lots in it and they have certain expectations and rights to, you know, for that cluster subdivision to be maintained the way it was originally approved. This cluster subdivision has changed over time. The preserved area's moved around, although the boundaries of it essentially haven't changed, so it's always been kind of in that area. But it was originally approved to be in multiple phases, so this area was intended to be cluster lots, so there were 16 more lots intended to be, to be subdivided and houses built there. And this area was intended to be preserved area for those lots. So I guess to get to the, to summarize, although this isn't ideal, this potentially kind of puts an end to the, to the, this bankruptcy process. And, you know, if, if the owners of the, of the cluster lots aren't, you know, radically opposed to this idea, the, the proposal does meet our, the language of the cluster regulations. So it does meet our regulations. So you, you can approve it without a variance. So you're not, you know, stepping out into unknown territory. This is a situation that, you know, can be done. It's not ideal, but they are requesting it to kind of close out these bankruptcy proceedings. It is land that was originally intended for preserved area, albeit for Phase, Phase Two of the original cluster proposal. The cluster lots that were intended here, the 16 lots, are only going to be four or are now potentially five. So there is a reduction of the originally intended number of, of lots in this area. So if you do approve this transfer of preservation area, the only condition really I have in here is that they follow through with the cluster requirements and transfer these by plat, so indicate on a plat, recorded plat, that this is the new preserved area and record any deed restrictions or any requirements required in, in the cluster regs to identify that as land that can't be further subdivided.
Could you repeat that?
The last part?
Yeah. Not the whole thing.
The cluster, the cluster regulations require you to, to record on a plat that this land is preserved, not to be further subdivided. And then you also have to record deed restrictions that say that this, this property cannot be further subdivided unless it's annexed into the city of Georgetown and rezoned. So there's just some language that's required on a plat to be recorded at the courthouse and then accompany deed restrictions that, that restrict that land from further subdivision.
Joe, you also mentioned that if it wasn't radically opposed, so where this would leave us?
Well, I, the only reason I say that is because I, I didn't really hear prior to writing the staff report from the, from the neighborhood, per se. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to the application itself. I think it meets our requirements. I just want to be, you know...
I really was thinking about it from your point of view. I was thinking about, we've got a courthouse full of people here, and I just wondered. Anyway.
They may not be opposed, though.
They may not.
Any other questions for Joe?
Is the Kits Miller property a done deal?
Yeah, it's under contract, yeah. The contract's...
It's under contract?
Yeah.
That's just a sliver to, to make it contiguous? All right, okay.
Yes. The preserved area now is this left-hand, that area, and then below that as well.
Yeah, these two pieces.
Total of 75 acres.
75.8...
Are both of those going to be moved, the 75 acres?
No, the 25 acres is not intended to be touched. I think the intention was to move this, combine this is 50.987, move, move it to this 51.25 acre piece. And I think that the acre, that's a little bit more, but I think that's includes the Kits Miller property, that's why it's a little bit more.
So right now, this upper area, which is the proposed new preserved area, is farmland.
Yes.
And it could, if we don't pass this, it could be developed as five-acre lots, just like any other A-1 area, right?
It could be, yes. They would have to get access to it. I think they could, would have to get access probably from Craig Lane, I'm not sure if they...
It's accessible from Craig Lane. And they own the 50 acres in the front of that, so technically it's, it's, it's broken into two parcels, but technically that's 100-acre track with 20 dwelling credits on it.
Okay, now if we change, make this change, then the other, what is now the preserved area, the 50 acres, could then be go back to farming or five-acre development, just like the other is now.
Correct.
Okay, we're just switching around.
Yes.
Just moving it. Other questions?
It's time to speak up.
Yep. No, we'll, I guess, is there someone here for the applicant? Yeah, we'll hear from the applicant and then, and then we'll take, take concerns from the audience.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Public speaking is not great, so. My name is Kaitlin Sacco, and I'm the partner of John Sharp's nephew, Josh. Josh and I reside in the home we own on Night Court in Lancelot Estates. He and his sisters own a home on Kane Run, the home where he grew up, and his sister resides on a farm off of Kane Run, also been in the family a long time. The family has deep connection to this area and to this land, and has for over 100 years. After John's passing, Josh and I stepped in to assist the family in wrapping up their father's estate. Today, we respectfully asked the planning commission to review our application as presented. We've spent the last several months, as Joe mentioned, working with P&amp;Z office staff and Mr. Perkins to ensure that the submission you have before you today met all of the P&amp;Z regs. Over the last week, we have been working diligently to correct information that's been circulating regarding our request. We've reached out to those individuals who have had incorrect information and offered the opportunity to discuss our current situation and the request. Unfortunately, sometimes rumors carry a bit more weight, so I'd like to take a minute to clarify the background with regards to our request for the record and also to explain the details of this request. Couple of months ago, we approached P&amp;Z and met with Charlie and Joe with a request to deed roughly four acres to Ms. Jones as part of a settlement agreement related to John's estate. This acreage was to come from the current preserved acreage across from Willowbrook with a request to preserve equal land off the back of the other side of the farm to maintain the required 75 preserved acres. We were instructed that preserved acreage could only be moved in 25-acre minimums or in the clumps that we had already had set up. In looking at the proposed plat, you'll see that there is a 50-acre for 50-acre swap being requested, as this 50 acres directly connects to Ms. Jones' current 22 acres. My understanding is that this type of request has been submitted and approved by this commission in the past. This submission is not a request to create a tract for a neighborhood or to enter into a neighborhood development agreement with Ms. Jones. There is no roadway or road easement being requested, as evidenced by our... As evidenced by our initial plat submission, our original intent was never to even transfer the 50 acres, but to carve out to deed this land to Ms. Jones as part of our settlement to preserve the required land acreage and to maintain the ability of the boys to continue farming after John's death. I can assure you, no one cares more about farmland than farmers and about preserving farmland than farmers. I would imagine that each farmer in this county is intimately aware of the loss of farmland across the state and I can assure you that our attention and focus has been and will continue to be farming. I know that today, the Willowbrook Homeowners Association will propose a variance be approved whereby we preserve five acres off the back of the farm as opposed to the current 50 being requested and maintain the remaining 45 acres across from the Willowbrook subdivision. We are agreeable to this request as we were originally, but we request that if this is requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it be recorded for the record that our initial submission did meet the requirements that set forth by planning and zoning. Thank you.
Questions? Hold on. Anybody, anybody have questions from the commission? You good? All right. All right. How do we want to do this? Somebody have a list that?
We have at least one attorney involved with some of the neighboring owners. I don't know how many, but we might start there and see where we go.
Well, that's probably a good idea.
My name is John Sosby. I'm with the Georgetown Law Firm, Cook &amp; Watkins. I represent the Willowbrook Homeowners Association, which includes, you know, 20 of the, the folks who are involved with this. You can see the, the development just to the south here or just to the bottom from the Jones property. I would say that's, that's the clients that I represent, but the interest of those clients, I think, is shared by a lot of folks in some of these surrounding areas. Some of the folks over in Lancelot, some of the folks over in Craigmore. There's a lot of areas out there that are, are affected by this and I think, you know, I speak with a similar concern to you, but my job here tonight is to represent the Willowbrook Homeowners Association and their take on this. Respectfully, I would not support the application as it exists before this, this body. Respectfully, the HOA and its membership, you don't live in this area by accident. There are considerations for buying in this area, there are considerations for building in this area about living in a rural area. You certainly don't move here for convenience sake. You move here purposefully. And the interest that they have is in maintaining the existing preserved property as it exists today, as it existed when they moved into the area. That is their interest on the basis of increased traffic that would come with development, on the basis of the view shed changing and on the characteristics of their very neighborhood, which would now connect if this was developed or made available for development over to Lancelot, over to some of the other subdivisions. It would connect a lot of this. Now, that being said, our opposition doesn't extend to all development out there. As was alluded to, I would propose that you would also hear something that frankly has a de minimis difference from what has been applied for, and that is a simple exchange not of 50 acres for 50 acres, but an exchange of the five acres necessary to conclude the bankruptcy, transfer to the Jones property, allow that development to be concluded and the remainder of the existing preserved area to stay just as it is, a preserved area. That would allow the furtherance of the goals of the folks at Willowbrook to know that their investment-backed expectations when they move to this community will stay largely the same. It will prevent future development of that property that they're going to have to look at, that they're going to have to deal with the traffic from coming up Willowbrook Lane and coming off of Old Farm Road. The proposal that I'm making would also have the effect of allowing these folks to get out of the bankruptcy, the applicants to get out of the bankruptcy, to make the settlement that they're looking to make, while at the same time preserving and protecting valuable farmland, which is a goal that I know this body has for the A1 district and it's one that we in, in Willowbrook certainly would share. That's what we, I say we, that's what the residents there moved to the area for, is to be surrounded by farmland. That's what they would like to keep. On the basis of what I'm proposing and what has been alluded to already, I would say you can consider a swap not of 50 acres, but of five or less acres, which would still be contiguous to Willowbrook, would allow the Jones property to be expanded for that fifth and final development lot that's been proposed and would preserve this 46 acre lot next to the 25 acre lot that, that nobody's proposing to change and keep this area largely the same as it is today, the way it was intended to be when the folks moved there and the way that it furthers the goals of this body. And so consequently, I would mention that a variance to make that happen would be the appropriate method for, for your consideration. And I'd like to say to a number of the folks here who share the goals of Willowbrook HOA, who share the goals of preserving this farmland, that while the application that was submitted may be slightly different from what we're talking about, the outcome would remain the same for you all. You could preserve this property. You could do so in a way that you could, could consider yourselves to be good neighbors, good stewards of the property that's out there, and I would ask you to support the proposal that we've made. No to the application as it's written because it can be done smaller and simpler with greater emphasis on preservation, and that's through a five acre variance. And so, I, I believe respectfully that, again, this is a de minimis change from what's actually proposed by the applicant, and that de minimis change allows for us to all meet the goals that we want here. I would like to reserve some time if anybody has any additional questions or issues on this, but otherwise, I would yield.
Are there questions from the commission?
Yes.
Mr. Sosby?
I really didn't understand exactly what you're proposing. I'm sorry, I'm a little slow.
Let me do the best I can. Is there a, is there a pointer on here?
Yeah.
So, what I'm proposing, sir, would be that this acreage would be removed from preserved status and transferred to this side where they have proposed new preserved tract in the same amount of acreage, 4.12 acres, over here, which would connect to the Willowbrook property.
Okay.
But at the same time, the rest of this, sorry, Jeff, the rest of this would stay the same.
Okay. Thank you.
We're still going to need that, we still need that sliver to keep it contiguous, I suppose?
To make it contiguous, you would.
Okay.
If, if I might throw out one, first off, I appreciate the suggestion. I, I think that's most reasonable and I think it would satisfy not only the neighborhood's concerns, I think it would satisfy our policy concerns, which is why we have the regulations in the first place. But I would like to point one other thing out. As long as the estate stays in the bankruptcy court, we still have the kind of a wild card, if you will, of what the bankruptcy judge might ultimately do. And I, I don't know anything about why they're there, what claims might be yet unresolved. But one of the reasons I gave up practicing bankruptcy law 20 some odd years ago is because you'd never know what is going to come out of there and the best protection for the people in there is for that thing to come out of the bankruptcy court. Because as far as I can, I can imagine, all their property is going to be subject to it, not the preserved area as it stands, but the property that they still own, if in fact there are claims to be made, if there's property that might need to be sold. So, in other words, it not only protects Willowbrook, it protects our policy concerns, which are the reason we have the regs in the first place, and I think it gives extra protection. It takes it out of the hands of a bankruptcy court that might take some other bizarre stance that would certainly be detrimental to the Sharp family, but conceivably detrimental to the neighborhood. So, again, thank you for the reasonable suggestion and that's all I wanted to point out, but I think that's a significant consideration also.
You're not suggesting another condition then? That, is there anything that needs to be tied, condition that needs to be tied to this?
I think, first off, and, and, and I, I believe I understand why Ms. Sacco asked that it be noted in the motion that she's not suggesting this because the court probably needs to know that they've done everything as best they can by the book. But I think it needs to be noted that ordinarily, we require, as of the time this was formed, a minimum acreage of 25 acres. So, this would in fact require a variance, which we've not done. We've probably moved them around before, but we've not allowed a variance. But I want to echo John's suggestion that this is actually a de minimis change. That, that's just a legal term that says it's, it's a minor change that really doesn't affect the substance of what we're doing. It still puts preserved land all around the development and it allows perhaps even more reasonable use of the Sharp property than would otherwise be allowed, which can get them out of bankruptcy court and frankly, again, provide even more protection than we can't provide because they'd still be subject to decrees of the bankruptcy court. So, all I think we would need to have on there is simply note in the motion that their application conforms to our regulations, that we are taking this slightly extra step to give further protection, not only to the applicant, but to the neighboring property owners, and that we are still meeting all the preserved area and protecting the interests that we have in our ordinance.
All right. I guess that brings us, you ready to hear from public now?
Always.
Yes.
I have one more question.
Yep.
If it weren't for this 4.1412 acres, there wouldn't be any issue, would there? Then why is that such a big deal?
I think it's.
That's what resolves the remaining claims in the bankruptcy court. That's why that's necessary. Otherwise, no, it wouldn't have any significance at all.
Without an exchange of cash. It's a land trade.
Yeah, that exchange of property is what will resolve those claims and get, get the estate out of the bankruptcy court.
Jones property has to have another 4.12 acres to settle all the bankruptcy stuff.
Somehow that resolves it. I have no idea what has to be, but that, somehow that resolves it. Yes, sir.
All right. Now, are we ready? Everybody sworn in, right?
Yes.
If you come up to speak, please state your name and, and address just for the record. That definitely helps out our, when we go to write out the minutes, it's extremely helpful.
My name's David Barron. I am at 209 Camelot Court in the Lancelot subdivision. Appreciate the Sharp's willingness to make sure that there's minimal impact, also like the attorney's position as far as making the minimal change. I find that to be the best personally from where I stand. One of the things I'd like to point out is that as we look at this, removing the preserved area that's here, if this preserved area gets moved, it is still able to go back under the regulations of the A1 developed into five acre lots, which I don't like personally from where I live because this property here is Mr. Charlie Walters' property. As many of y'all know, Mr. Walters is a World War, World War II vet, 102 years old, be 103 this year, and it won't take long for him to not be on this earth. And if this property can be developed, then that means his property can be developed, which means that all of this winds up being developed here. I would much rather see a small area reserved and moved over and have it settled at the smallest area versus giving all of this property right here, which would completely surround Willowbrook, Lancelot, and I'll just be honest, I don't know the name of that subdivision, even though I live out there, so, and adding that in there.
Craigmore.
That's where I, where I would stand, the smallest change as our lawyer presented.
Thank you. Others? Anybody else want to speak for or against? There we go.
Just a second here. All right. I'm Sandra Dacus. I'm a resident of Willowbrook, and I have to say that this whole process has been very stressful. But I can truthfully say that I support giving this small transfer for the exact reason that the last gentleman spoke to us, and he's not even a Willowbrook resident. And I thank him for pointing that out. I would like to thank all of the planning and zoning staff. We converged on them and had lots of questions, but they were all very helpful and thorough with their information. They did an amazing job helping all of us understand what was going on. I have a lot of respect for what you all do. Thank you to our attorney, John Sosby. He has enlightened a lot of things for us and we feel like he's done a wonderful job. I know we're paying him, but he's tirelessly given us a lot of time and advice. I feel much happier and more secure with the preservation of our development if this variance would come through. And I also feel much more helpful about Scott County development and promotion of farming if you allow this variance to come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hi, my name is Albert Tyler Barnett. I live at 213 Camelot, just down the road from you. Our property will directly touch, where is this pointer at? How does this work? Where am I at? We're right here.
Down by the.
Down by, we're right there.
Right there. Yep.
Where am I at? You're, yeah, that's where, that's where our house is, right there. So, this will end up being developed and the Walters property will be developed and will just be surrounded. We moved here in 1983, so it certainly precedes the cluster development, which was a novelty at the time. I rather like it and I don't know any of our Willowbrook neighbors, I'm sure I will soon, and I like the idea of keeping all this, ooh, sorry. No, I don't want to do that. Keeping all of this as one contiguous piece. I had no idea this was so involved. All I got was a piece of paper saying, here's a swap going to happen. That's all I've seen. Nobody's come to us or talked to us about it at all. So, I am definitely in favor of the, of the smaller variance that the Willowbrook attorney proposed. But Charlie, you and I know each other for a long time.
Long time.
I know that bankruptcy court is probably something completely out of my realm and everything, but if it's a wild card, I think it needs to be taken on its face value and, and just have to work through it, man. Thank you all so much for your time.
Good seeing you, Tyler.
Others? Anybody else wishing to speak?
In the preservation of time, I mean, it should be noted that the rest of the people here pretty much agree with what's been said instead of having to say the same thing over and over again, if we can just say there's a number of people here that feel the same way.
I was going to say for the sake of time, that's probably a good idea. If you, if everybody has similar, similar concerns, then we do have a long meeting tonight. I think we're, got plenty to, plenty to cover.
If I might suggest before this gentleman speaks, why don't you just ask for a show of hands of those here who are in support of what John Sosby has suggested?
That's a good idea. Is there anybody that's opposed to what's being proposed?
It seems pretty overwhelming, so if they would note that in the minutes, please.
Applicant, all right?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Without being, I'm not on the.
If you would, please.
Oh, we'll have you drug out of here if you're not on the list.
Please come up, please come up here and ask a question so everybody, otherwise, there won't be any record of it.
Danny Striplhoff, 116 Craigmore Estates. So, we had joined the Sharp property on the back. Those boys do like to farm. I can say that for them. What I'm concerned about and I don't understand is the proposed new preserved tract, 51.25 acres, that's outlined in red on the right. What, is that preserved, is that part of the cluster development?
That would have been, that would have been if it was transferred, but as, what we're proposing now is, what's being proposed now is to maintain the two preserve tracks on the left-hand side.
Yes.
And only add about, five acres, five acres in that far corner.
Of that 51.25.
Not 51, only, only five.
And it would be connected by, connected by a sliver of property along.
What happens to that farm?
They keep farming it.
It'd still be farmed.
Can it be developed?
It can be developed. There's no, there's no, there's no restriction on it.
Okay. As, as five acre lots, right?
Yeah.
As five acre lots. Or it could be.
A cluster.
A cluster, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Whitney. I'm a resident of Willowbrook and on the board of directors of the HOA. I was getting ready to be very opposed to this, but the original proposal, that was before the board today, but if we're kind of going beyond that and talking about the other option, the five acres, absolutely, that's what should be done. the other option, the five acres, absolutely, that's what should be done. That's at least restrictive, and I think it makes everybody happy. So without reading my luminous comments against the original proposal, I think that would be all I have to say.
All right.
You said your name was Jeff Whitney?
Jeff Whitney.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak, or you think a show of hands is enough? Go ahead.
One more time.
One more.
All right. I just wanted to thank you all for hearing us out. Sorry it came to the Planning and Zoning Board again. I know we've been up here before. I think a lot of this could have been resolved with meeting with the HOA beforehand. But I just want to let everybody know that when I bought that lot in Willowbrook, I talked to John. I think the only person in this room that knew John longer than me was Beckham. I met him when I was four years old and didn't really know who he was at that time, but the whole time that I was out there, he was always adamant about preserving the farmland. And that's what I'm going to concede continue to happen.
Your name again, sir?
Jeremy DeWes.
Thank you.
Jeremy DeWes.
Anybody else wish to speak? Rest your case.
Sorry.
One more.
My name is Sherry McMurray. I live at 107 Ashwood Circle in Willowbrook. And like Jeff, where do you go? I too had a luminous presentation against the original proposal. However, I'm only here to tell you on the record that the Willowbrook Board of Directors, of which I'm a member, fully supports this five-acre swap. And I think that needs to be on the record as the official position of the Willowbrook HOA.
It's on the record now.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? All right. And that applicant, you're okay with this?
Yes.
No opposition? All right.
No opposition.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? Do we need... Anything else we need to cover, Charlie?
Assuming the vote goes the way the hands have gone, I would just like for it noted in the motion that this satisfies our policy concerns, you know, that support our ordinance, that applicant did not propose this variance, but agreed to it after other property owners proposed it, and otherwise that it is a very small change from our ordinance.
We really don't have a description per se, so I'm going to rely on staff to make sure that...
We have a plan that we submitted originally. Joe has a copy of it, so it's drawn up and ready to go.
If I may amend my comments earlier, just I think it should be noted that the five acres that are being moved, that is, will be preserved area. And I think it wasn't mentioned.
Be preserved, yeah.
Yes. Oh, yes. It will... Yes. Yes. And that'll be reflected on the plat, yes.
Do I understand that correct? Are we going to set aside five acres after taking 4.12, or is it going to be a 4.12 swap?
4.12.
Yeah. It'd be an even swap.
Okay. We're not going to add it?
The transfer of 4.12 acres of preserved land from existing F1 tract to north track.
All right. Everybody understands what we're about to vote on? And do we need to make any special condition beyond the two that are...
If you would, whoever makes the motion, if you just simply incorporate the rambling I just did a moment ago. And, "Hey, what's up?" And then staff will actually review that plat that is in their possession, make sure it comports. We'll sign off on that and go from there.
Anybody brave enough to make this motion?
Chairman, I move that we accept this proposal contingent upon Charlie's brilliant remarks.
And the two conditions of approval.
Yes.
I think we need to beef up your resolution. That's what I think.
The motion, it does conform to our regulations. We'll be doing a swap, 4.12 acres from the...
It would require variance.
It's showing on... It does require variance.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's... I thought the sliver was going to make it contiguous.
Well, it's contiguous, but it's not 25 acres in size, so...
Okay.
It's often less than 25 acres. Several would require...
All right, so we need... We weren't showing a variance. Oh, okay. There wouldn't be a variance before because of the 75. All right.
Yeah.
All right, so we need to put in here that there was a variance.
Well, yeah, and we are varying it. And that goes back to the de minimis comment.
Okay.
What it is removing from the 50 acres is the 4.12, which is still allows satisfaction of the goals of our ordinance, as well as the protection of all the property owners. And again, incorporate that into whatever motion, and we'll make sure that gets in it from the record.
So our variance is that we are allowing less than 25 acres.
Yes. The piece that's being moved is less than 25 acres.
Still be attached, but it's not a...
Yes. Yeah, it's to be contiguous.
It's not 25 acres.
Is that variance part of the motion, or is that a separate motion?
No, it just needs to be referenced in the motion.
All right. Everybody understand what they're voting on?
I amend my motion to...
Include the variance?
Yes.
All right. I'll repeat that, then. Our motion is to accept this motion that conforms to our regulations and includes the two conditions of approval. It also includes a variance that we will have 4.12 acre tract, which is less than the 25 acres that we normally require for a preserve tract. Everybody understand what we're voting on? All those in favor, say aye.
Did we get a second?
No, I'm sorry. I need a second. We got a second right here.
Everybody's second.
Mr. Best.
There you go.
All seconds. Everybody who approves this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We've got a motion passed here. And thank everybody here for coming out.
Yeah.
Complicated issue.
Oh, great. This man, he looks...
Great, isn't he, though?
That's right.
Well, we might. Pretty well, Willowbrook was... Because the other part had been approved.
Good job, guys.
See what time is it?
I'd say she's home.
Anybody need a break, or you want to?
No. No, 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 no. We have stamina here.
We got a lot of people clearing up.
I keep waiting for you guys to come back. Come on.
No, we're not. We're stuck there. We're home on Reedus, aren't we?
That's what I've heard. That's what I've heard. I've asked about you.
Very, very. Now, we got to go back to Reedus.
Okay, but we're on it, too, I think.
We've got to pass that.
I got all the internet, all the cameras.
Okay. We're ready.
We've got to go through it anyway.
Yeah.
Well, I probably can't complain then. Well, I knew that. I knew that. I knew we were... Well, I got... Gosh, you guys have been... Well, no, Stell was probably born before y'all left. You haven't been gone that long, but we now have little Charlie.
If you're ready, I can...
Hold on, man. Let's get everybody calmed down.
She and I are just hooked up.
Frank said we've already heard you before. You don't have to say anything.
What's that?
Frank said we've already heard you before.
We're going to go on. Move on here. We've got a long ways to go.
Good seeing you.
Huh? Oh, just a minute. We got to wait a minute. Lost our quorum.
Pat the man on his back, and he takes off.
Mark should be coming in here shortly.
Can I present my...
I think that worked out really well.
Chill.
Well, not one of the variants, but it'd been a lot quicker.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that what she's going to talk about now? Okay. All right. Now, otherwise, I'll have another question. My last good life will come right into me.
What's that?
Okay. All right. I'll go ahead and get started. So this is essentially the second component of the previous application that we heard. So this is about Rita Jones' property out on Willowbrook Lane. It's zoned A1 agricultural. All those surrounding properties are also zoned A1. And this is essentially an application to divide one tract into five tracks. So that's the site there. I probably don't have to go through too much of the background here now, but this is the 22.4 acres that she owns. It did receive preliminary approval to divide into four tracks, and they are proposing to transfer and consolidate those 4.12 acres to bring it up to a total of 26 acres to create five tracks. This is what was previously approved back in August of 2019, so that just shows the four five-acre tracks. And then this shows what they're now proposing. I did put an updated plat up there for you guys. They reflected some of the changes that we had asked for. So it is showing that underground easement along the northern boundary there and the five tracks, five five-acre tracks. So this is the 4.12 acres. That was the discussion that will be consolidated into her 22-acre tract to create the five-acre tract. Beyond that, she is proposing to extend Willowbrook Lane. So there's the county right-of-way that goes to the end of her property. So she's proposing to extend the pavement there and create the turnaround that would meet the county road standards. So she is required to do that with the five tracks. But beyond that, all the tracks are meeting our regulations, so I'm proposing, or I'm recommending approval of the application with pretty standard conditions. Only two that aren't. It's just that the roadway and cul-de-sac must be constructed and bonded prior to final subdivision plot approval. And there are some requirements with GMWSS for needing to extend the water line to serve the property. So you guys have any questions for me, or...
Any questions from commission?
All right.
Does the applicant want to speak, or do we want to see how many people?
I'm just here to answer any questions anyone has.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant? Anybody want to speak for or against this application? All right, we're moving along pretty quick on this one.
Thank you.
Everybody want to have any other questions, or ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Ready to vote? You making a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve FSP 2019-46.
Yeah, I'll second it. We've got a motion, a second. Motion by Mr. Best, second by Mr. Stone. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion passes.
Good.
I think Rita's already got this taken care of. All right, we're ready to move on to... Where does that take us now? We're down to...
Oh, one, I think.
Yep. We're down to item B, Foley, multifamily development.
All right. So this is an application to request eight apartment units on a 32,648 square foot lot. It's located at 111 Clayton Avenue. It's zoned R2, which is our medium density residential zoning district. The properties north and east are also zoned R2, and the properties south and west are zoned R1B, which is one of our single-family residential zoning districts. Briefly, the proposal does meet our density requirements with the eight units that they're proposing, and it also does meet the parking requirements. Just to go over this front screen here. But this is the site here. So it's on the corner. This is South Broadway here, and then this is Clayton Avenue. So this is that vacant lot that's on the corner of the intersection there. I do just have an aerial of it as well, so you can see. This is a triplex in the north, and then there's some single-family residences that's around the project site. I should go over this briefly. This existing entrance here off of Clayton Ave, they are proposing to remove. So that would actually, asphalt would be dug up, and it would turn into grass. So this is the new plan that they submitted. I did provide a copy for you up there. So it's a little bit different from what we had seen at workshop. It reflects some of the changes that staff had recommended as far as moving the building up to front along South Broadway and move the parking area to the rear, and also provide an access off of Clayton Avenue here, which would allow, you know, potential residents that would be living on the site to utilize the light at Clayton Avenue, rather than having to make a left on the South Broadway with this busy intersection. And it is approximately 30 feet from that light there, so it's just... There's not a lot of separation distance to try and come out on South Broadway from that entrance. But to go over the plan a little bit, they are proposing two separate buildings that would have four units each of one bedroom. Our parking requirement for one-bedroom units is one and a half spaces per unit. So they are proposing 14 spaces here, so that would meet the minimum requirement at 12 spaces. The parts in green that I've drawn in here are some of the landscaping requirements that the plan isn't showing, but they would be required to show on the final development plan. They will have to provide screening from the adjoining property owner here, as well as along Clayton Ave, so just a hedge line there, and then a hedge line and some trees. They are proposing to put a fence and a hedge line along this eastern boundary here to screen from the single-family residents there. There is an existing tree line of sorts on the northern boundary. We also did ask for a barrier of a hedge or a fence along this drainage ditch that exists along Clayton Ave. Just for safety concerns, we're looking for a barrier between the project site and that drainage ditch. Beyond that, the request is meeting all of our requirements. There's no longer a variance request because they're proposing to put the building into two separate units. So I also did bring in the elevations that they had provided. So this is showing it all as one building, which is what they had originally applied with. But I just thought it might help you guys to see, you know, what they are proposing. So this would be the four units on each side, and they were proposing a breezeway with some interior stairs to access the units through the breezeway there. And then this would be the back of the building. With that, I am recommending approval of the application. I mostly have fairly standard conditions on it. The only exceptions are just providing that fence or hedge line along the southern boundary of the project site where the drainage ditch exists. And also, I did recommend that the final development plan be brought back to the planning commission. That was with the intent that if they didn't do the redesign and brought it in with the building in the rear and the parking in the front and no entrance off Clayton. But if you guys feel comfortable with it, you can remove that condition. But that was it. Do you guys have any questions for me, or...
I thank Mr. Foley for taking our recommendations. I'm pleased with what he's done there.
All right. We'll hear from the applicant.
My name is Steve Baker. I'm with Midwest Engineering. I represent Mr. Foley and really don't have a whole lot to add to that. McCayle has been really great about helping us square away some of those issues. One thing I think I would say is that Mr. Foley still would prefer to have access onto South Broadway, but he understands, you know, he's willing to accept the will of this body. So the only thing I would point out is the requirement for coming back to this body for the final development plan. I would, I think we would request that that be, not be required if you're satisfied with this alternate plan. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them from an engineering perspective.
Do you have any suggestions for what might be some improvements we could make in order to... I think a lot of the problem that's happening upstream in that drainage ditch is the culverts getting stopped up with debris. I don't know if you can make, put it in larger grade or something through there that would...
Well, I haven't done any exhaustive hydraulic analysis of that, but I suspect it's just a matter of pipe capacity, and there's probably not an easy solution to that. However, I think we can make sure this development does not make that any worse. If anything, make it some better because our drainage can act... If anything, make it some better because our drainage connect, right now it naturally flows toward South Broadway. With this development, a lot of it will flow back toward the drainage ditch, which I know it all eventually goes to one place, but it has a little more capacity there in the ditch along Clayton than it does there at South Broadway.
All right, are there questions from commission for the applicant? Nope, all right. Kayla has something.
I apologize. I forgot to mention that I did receive a letter expressing some concerns about this application. And I did print it off and leave it up there for you guys. And I think Charlie has a copy as well that I just want him to initial and put in the record. They had asked for that to happen.
Thank you.
I'm Chip Foley, and it's my application. I am willing to build the the two buildings. However, I really think that putting it all in one building, that the one that Michaela showed is going to be a much better looking building. I had my draftsman draw up a sketch yesterday afternoon of what it would look like in the two buildings.
You start down there, man.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I just think the one building is going to look much better than the two, but I'll do it whatever way you all prefer.
Oh, you're saying the? Yeah, the one she had is?
I just think that's a much better looking building, but you all have to give variance on the eight, given eight units in the building instead of six. And more often we do that, or I'll just, you know, put it in two buildings, which I don't think look nearest attractive as the ones that I think. But either way, you go with one.
I have to rely on staff for that. I don't know.
I agree with you. I think it looks better in one building, my personal opinion.
We have a neighbor here who feels the same way.
I would tend to agree if, I haven't seen the two buildings. Is there exterior staircases on this building?
They're only connected by a roof line, correct?
I think we would prefer the breezeway.
One building?
You mean one roof line, yeah. But still, they'd still be separated as far as there'd be a void between the two, but they'd be connected by a roof.
The roof should be connected.
By the roof, yeah. Definitely looks better. All right. Want to hear, do you have anything else to say, Chip? Yeah, I saw you. Anybody have questions, Mr. Foley?
I have a question, but I'm not on the sign up list.
Oh, my goodness.
He'll take care of you. Anybody else?
There's always somebody from my neighborhood that just breaks all the rules. You swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, best information believed. Thank you.
I'm Pat Lair, and my wife Lisa, we live on the adjoining property to the east. My only question after seeing the changes tonight is if the parking is in the back and from what the plans that Chip has, the building's going to be a
To the front?
Like the first floor above floodplain, right? So it's going to be elevated.
Right.
Will the parking lot be elevated?
It'll have to be, wouldn't it?
So what that's going, I'll tell you what that's going to create for our property. There's going to be water coming into the back of our house. I'll guarantee it.
I tend to agree that I think the parking lot needs, the parking lot and surrounding areas need to stay a little bit lower.
All of that is raised, there's less space for the water that does come into there. And it's not, it's not going anywhere but back us or back up, you know, the intersection with South Hamilton and Cross Broadway. I think with the parking in the front, I know it's going to be elevated, but it's it's not on my side. That's that's just a change from what we saw the other day.
Well, I think if the parking lots any higher than anything around, it doesn't need to be more than six, six or eight inches higher, but.
But isn't the parking lot required to have special drainage?
It's got to have storm water in it.
Well, but not, it won't be just runoff. Don't we require it to have special drainage, not just runoff?
As far as the drainage, I mean, regardless of where the parking is in the front or the back, we we can design the grading plan to where, you know, no offsite water goes to the adjacent property. We would use catch basins, curbing, and and I don't think that the parking lot will need to be at the same elevation as the first floor of the property. There will be some elevation difference between the two, but there will be some feel necessary to make make it work. But I think we can alleviate that issue with just designing it properly.
I mean, it'd be nice if sometime sometime in the future, I hope that the culvert and drain, I don't know what, it's probably going to take a lot to solve the problem.
The city needs to increase the pipe all the way down.
Right.
Yeah, all the way down and all the way to the creek check-ins.
But it's, yes. Well, it might if you raise your if you raise your parking lot too much, it might it might push water back.
No, if you have the proper drainage in the parking lot, it shouldn't.
Well, I mean, the water's got to have a place to come across. You can't dam it.
Well, that's true, yeah, but.
All right.
My name's Dr. Gary Mills. Mills, Kiprak, they got 407 South Broadway. I also own the duplex behind it on Ely Alley. This property being completely covered over practically with hard surfaces means that water's got to go somewhere. It's going to go into that drainage ditch, but that drainage ditch can't handle it. It's not handled it for the last 30 years. My duplex behind me has had up to three feet of water in it from that that drainage system, not functioning. You put that much more hard surface, your property will have an effect on that drainage ditch, will have an effect on the flooding downstream from it, okay? It will go across South Broadway. Even if you dump it into that drainage ditch, that drainage ditch is only going to handle so much. It's going to flood up and over, which is going to create more of a problem. Right now, it's all open dirt. It can go down in that dirt and not necessarily runoff into the drainage system and create the issue. The second thing that I have an issue with it is just last week, I was to a meeting for variance in this same neighborhood, and it was denied because it was going to degrade the historical nature of this community. This building does not look historical at all. And it's right on that that edge of that National Historical District. My home, that my office is in is 140 years old. It looks 140 years old, style wise. I upkeep it. If that something goes in there like that, it's going to decrease my property value because it doesn't look according to the neighborhood, and rental property will decrease my value. Those are the concerns that I have about this going in there.
Sir?
Yes?
Are you suggesting it not be developed then? Because anything you develop is going to have the same surface.
A single dwelling home will not create that much drainage as this will. It's the size of of all the lots around it could have a single family dwelling home on it and not have the effect.
If I might point out, Mr. Chairman, the problem with that argument is this isn't zoned the same as the other properties. This is zoned R2, which is a multi-family zoning. Yeah, the the variance you're talking about a week or so ago, that was in R1B. It's got much more restricted zoning. R2 is a multi-family. So we're actually kind of lucky that it wasn't zoned business for all the years that Clarks was there.
That's what I was wondering, how long, how long has it been zoned R2? Was it was a just a commercial?
As far as I know, it was always R2. I don't know how, but then Clarks was there or whoever preceded Clark. They were there forever. I mean, I was a child and they'd already been there for years, so.
Used to go there for ice, block ice.
Yeah.
All right, who's next to speak?
My name's David Baron. I'm back again. I also own the property at 411 South Broadway, which is at the corner of Rucker. And I have a lot of the same concerns that Dr. Mill has, mainly with the water runoff. That's my biggest concern because water continually runs into the basement of the of our of our house that we have there. And it's done at, my grandparents owned that house 40 years. They bought it in 78. She, my grandmother passed away. It went into the banks for a little while, and then I was able to purchase it back just this past year. But it's always been an issue with water. And you widened Broadway, you put all the lanes in, the water runs down the hill, water's running right into those properties down through there, through Ely Alley. They've had water in that basement up to eight feet. The drainage is, you're, brother, you're right. The pipes cannot handle it. The pipes, they're 12 inch pipes. Unless we go back through and we started enlarging the storm drains, which we need to do. And if we don't start fixing the curbs, because you go down Rucker Avenue and there's not a curb down the street, it's all broken down. It's not been a curb there and, well, I'm 42 and I, like I said, my grandparents owned that place, and I can't tell you how long, you know, since I've seen a curb and the streets actually maintained like they should have been. So my concern, I get the historical aspect, but my concern is all about water. I pump water out now. You get a good hard rain. I've been I've been watching for days now to make sure it's the rain that's not been that's been coming. Earlier in the summer, we had a great hard rain come down. What did I see? City workers out there at that very drain with your lot underwater, standing there with rakes, garden rakes, hoping to clear out the drain. And it didn't do them any good, didn't do them any good at all. Why? Because the size of the pipe is this big. You can't, you can't feed all that water. And so if you're going to do that, all you're going to do is you're going to flood my property, you're going to flood Dr. Mill's property, you're going to flood Ely Alley, you're going to let the the guys down at the tree, the tree company down there, Asplund, they're all going to be underwater. The people that just had their house catch on fire and they've rebuilt it, it'll be underwater. Guys, fix the, fix the, fix the drainage. Come through there, I'll put up with a year's worth of construction work down through there to put in the right pipes to get it fixed. But we've got to do something about that and fix it. Otherwise, you know, put whatever you need to on there. But the more we put more concrete, the bigger the parking lot, the worse the problem's going to be.
We don't have our staff engineer here tonight, but if he was here, I think he would, he might be able to. I don't know if this thing would would it be required to probably have onsite detention, wouldn't it?
Can I speak to that? I spoke to Eddie and Dan at length about that. And just like with any private development, we're held to modeling the existing stormwater runoff based on percentage of impervious area versus pervious. And our development cannot produce more peak runoff than what's there now.
What's there now?
We're held, every private development's held to that. So true, this will create more impervious area, but we will use onsite detention methods and design to limit the peak runoff to alleviate those concerns, just like we would anywhere in in your jurisdiction.
And this property's not going to, it's not a problem. It probably could be sudden for everything, but they'll do their.
I agree. I think the only thing that people are concerned about is that if it's made any worse. But true to what he said, any development is not, is supposed to be held to a standard that the runoff will not be any greater than what it was as a bare lot.
That's a big word.
Can we require pervious pavement? And I've seen the demonstration for the.
Well, I think I think what they normally do, they.
Hose in the, on the pavement sucks right into that, what looks like solid concrete.
A lot of them put in the onsite detention. It's a cavern underneath the parking lot that would hold the water and then release it slowly after. That's that's how they do it various ways. All right, who's next?
My name's John Homrick. I live at 213 Maplewood Drive here in Georgetown, and I drive right by that intersection every day taking kid to school. And I had some bullet points and then a quick summary. It won't take but a minute. I didn't want to waste y'all's time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Some of the things I'd mentioned, this is a neighborhood with historic houses on both sides of the area. And it's surrounded by single family dwellings. It's a great opportunity here to preserve some of Georgetown's quality of life. You know, there's some houses right across from that that could end up being destroyed. They're vacant now. And the argument for the property owner would be, well, there's an apartment area right there. Why can't I build one right here? So I think this is a opportunity for someone to get their foot in the door to completely change the makeup of a neighborhood. As we discussed, this area sees some congested traffic in the mornings and evening. Between 4:30 and 6:00, it's not unusual to see traffic backed up from Main Street all the way to that red light at Clayton and the traffic backed up from Clayton to Hamilton Street. People would not be able to get in or out of the apartment complex at that time. It's hard for residents to navigate that intersection at that time. As you all know, there's a school, Garth, right beside that area, and children walk to school in that area. There's also two playgrounds there. And this is going to give children, parents, another obstacle to navigate to get their children to and from school safely and as the children come to and from the playgrounds there. We talked about the area flooding, the existing drainage problems, and that area drains directly into Royal Springs, Georgetown's drinking water. The parking lot there will have cars that leak oil, have antifreeze issues. People are naturally going to work on their vehicles. That is going to drain directly into our water supply. I, I'd like for us to take a minute and just think about how that apartment kind of plex is going to change the character of that area. It's going to negatively impact every neighbor that lives around there, their property value. How would it improve Georgetown's quality of life? I'm not so sure it will improve the quality of life. But how does this negatively affect the citizens of Georgetown? It adds a lot of complexity to an already challenging traffic situation in that area. There are times when people go to pick up their kids from the two schools there, Garth and Georgetown Middle, they're going to have to drive right by that area early in the morning when it's congested and when they pick their kids up from school. There could be some considerations to our community's water supply with the runoff, as we already said. It's a historic area with many beautiful homes there, and it is going to completely change the character of that neighborhood. It could become a source of noise. Suppose some people want to get out there and wash their cars. It's a nice summer evening. Why not turn up the radio loud while you're washing your cars and polishing them up? So I think that this, despite the, or in spite of the many problems it does have, could also impact the Georgetown citizens when they drive by that intersection. And if you live around that area, it could negatively affect your quality of life also. Again, thank y'all for letting me speak to that.
I would point out one, one thing. If you look at the background information on this, I think with subject property is zoned R2. The properties to the north and east are zoned R2. And the properties to the south and west are zoned R1B, which is a single family residential. But I mean, this, this is not the only R2 property there. It's.
It's trapples right next door.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, my name's William Lookerson. I own the property at 602 South Broadway. We have small children there, so a denser development, I'm not exactly in favor of. It's better than the campfires that they used to do at the other place that's getting ripped out, but it's a better development than that, I'll say that. But the flooding is an issue, especially for my house. My house is 1907. It's got a stone foundation. It always leaks, almost all year long. It has a very, very small leak in it. When Clayton gets so high that they actually have to shut the road down, which has happened in the 12 years that I've been there, they've actually shut the road down because the water was so high, it's, you can just hear it just spraying through the concrete blocks. So it is an issue if their plan is to dump it into that culvert, which can't handle the water already. water already. So that is like putting the, you know, the old phrase, putting the cart before the horse. They need to fix the problem before we add more, because right now, it all rolls across Broadway, because the elevation is right there. If you raise it up, you're gonna, and they have to raise it up, because I don't think anybody's gonna insure a property that's gonna get flooded all the time, so they're gonna raise their property, which is gonna force it all to back up, back up Clayton, and back up into the road, which has shut down before because of the amount of water.
I might...
Is my biggest...
I might defer to Charlie just to explain that we, we have, we have the authority to make some decisions on these applications, but we don't have the authority to, to fix the drainage system for Georgetown.
It's a shame we're not given both, but we're not.
But it's like, that, you know, that's the biggest thing, is we're getting, already getting a lot of water pressure on our basements, and that culvert can't handle the water, and they've already said they're gonna divert the water into the culvert but can't handle the water.
Well, i- if I might point out one thing, before this goes, let's assume it gets approved. One of the requirements is they've got to go through a water management, stormwater management plan, it's gotta comply with the city's formal stormwater management plan. That plan says they can't add more to it, they're gonna have to delay it, it may be, to make it an absurd example, they've got to hang on to it until all the rest of the water's gone before they can let it go. They may have to dig one hell of a hole and then pump it out after you all have, you know, kinda dried out a little bit, but they've got to comply. So we can actually approve the plan, they've still got to meet stormwater requirements. If they can't meet them, then Mr. Foley's gonna have a beautiful plan approved and not a whole lot he can do about it. So it's, it's not like build your place and, you know, kinda let it to the, you know, re- the wild wind, it doesn't work that way. That, that doesn't mean every problem gets resolved, no, mistakes are made and nature sometimes has the last word, but they've got to comply with the stormwater plan, and that's what governs everybody. Whether that's detention, whether that's pre-treatment, I mean, there's all kinds of requirements, all that's gotta be done, they can't just cut loose the water and add to the existing problem.
Like I say, I still, the other thing was, was that, like I say, I just don't think it fits with the neighborhood as well as it should, but I realize the zoning on it...
The zoning on it, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah.
That's all, that was my biggest concern, was having...
And that's, that's one other thing we haven't done yet either.
I, I grew up in that neighborhood, so I certainly understand that, but, but the zoning governs what we do too.
Thank you.
If we had a historic district with, what kind of standards is that called? Architectural standards, which we don't have at this point.
Well, if, if, if I might remind the chair, although I don't think you're actually directly involved, we fought like cats and dogs to get some architectural standards, and we were opposed up and down, and as such, the local legislative bodies wouldn't even listen to us. So, that, that was a lost opportunity any number of times.
Even, yeah.
And I won't even mention the city council.
We already asked, we, we've actually brought it up to Joe Kane, he's, he's very worried about it. We've had plans...
Yeah, well, we, we fought about that, it's been twenty-five years ago.
I think, I think it might be different now, yeah.
And, and it, it probably would be, because it was terribly underceptive then. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I've got another one of my neighbors down here ready to speak, and I don't think she's been sworn in either, so...
Anybody else need to be sworn in at this time? That wishes to speak?
We're all looking at you. Do you swear a firm statement you're about to make to be the truth to, to the best of your information and belief? Excuse me.
There's one more, Charlie.
Go ahead.
Oh, and you too. Thank you.
Well, we've lived twenty-three years in a little Cape Cod home right behind this property, and we always knew it would be developed, that's not a surprise, and we knew about the zoning. We didn't want any kind of commerce there with lots of lights and the threat of theft or something, you know, lots of cars coming in and out, and when we heard about Chip's plan, we were pleased because it's gonna be developed, there's no two ways about it, and I would rather see residences than I would see any kind of commerce. I, I can't imagine asking him to build it so that it's historically in keeping with the neighborhood, I think it's unreasonable, I would love that, but, I mean, a fact is a fact, it's gonna be developed and you can't stop that, right? And we can't stop that, so we have to pick and choose. And my only, my only concern is my home, and I'm really, you know, my voice is shaky because that lot is horrendous, and it floods before everything else, but it floods in that back portion. It doesn't flood in the front, it doesn't go onto Broadway until later. The first flooding area is the back part of the lot where this parking lot would go, and once that floods, I know it's coming to us. We have an airtight home, our basement has only flooded once in twenty-three years, we don't have any problems with water, except when the creek cannot hold any more water, and that, the first thing that happens is that lot floods in the back, and then our backyard floods, and then the pipes which go from our house to the creek, the creek water comes in, you know, and it's not because our house leaks, it's because it's an inadequate supply. So, it's only happened once in twenty-three years, I've trained myself not to be afraid, but I am afraid of a parking lot that I know is right where the problem is and is gonna send the water to us. I'm scared of that change. I'm not afraid of the development, I'm, I'm, I think what I'm asking you is to consider, I don't know what power you do and don't have, but to consider, you redrew his original plans, I know you must have the power to do that, because it, the parking lot used to be in the front and now it's in the back, and it used to be one building and now it's two. Can your engineers, whoever has the power to redraw plans, look more carefully at the water situation before this is approved? And you keep saying, I know, new builds have to meet the requirements, but I think this is an unusual new build, I mean, there's a serious problem already, so, I don't, I'm not sure just meeting the requirements is adequate, I don't know. I support Mr. Foley, I just want it done in a way that doesn't harm us, and that's all I have to say.
Hey, we're there about one thing, their engineers are not drawing any, the latest, they recommended the plan, the planning workshop, and my engineer...
Redrew the two buildings and put the, okay, but, so your recommendations instead of your engineering drawings, those are the things that I hear about, what, that you take into consideration.
It takes, it takes some serious, serious drainage engineering, but they, they can contain a lot of that water out, and we've got another engineer sitting down here, I know he's done a lot of it for, for development over next to the railroad, they, I don't know how much...
I'm a trustworthy person, I wanna trust everybody that, you know, but what happens if that doesn't happen? What happens? You know, all the promises just go out the window, you know?
And you got David Lusby here, that's, city council is one that can probably help, help you out more than anything on these water issues.
Which we have, we bought the Bradshaw property, as you recall, and that's the significant improvement to the area, so to really solve the problem's gonna cost millions of dollars, and, you know, it's something we'd love to do, we just can't afford to do it quite yet.
It's a field about, you think that development can take place there, and...
That's, that's an engineering question, it's definitely out of my realm.
We have others who wanna speak, back, back here.
Did you guys think that this is in a flood zone or is it not?
It's not in a flood zone.
It's not in a flood lane?
No, no.
Okay.
It floods, but it's not... It's flood zone X, which is the least flood zone.
There, there was definitely a history of, not super major problems, but, you know, there's a lot, a lot of problems with drainage in that area. Other question, any other comments, questions from the, from the audience? Questions from the commission?
Yes, this one issue that Charlie brought up about they can't add any water drainage issues, that would include the neighbor's property? They cannot make it worse for the neighbor than it is now?
Correct. They, they cannot have water leaving the property that's a worse condition than what they've got. One, and unfortunately, we don't have our engineer here tonight, because he could explain this far better than I'm sure any of us could. It might not be a bad idea if, even if it were approved, which frankly, we don't have a lot of authority not to approve plans that comply with our regs. In fact, if, if it complies, we, we can't disprove it, at least not legally. But it may not be a bad plan to allow it to be reviewed for stormwater and then perhaps bring it back if for no other reason for the neighborhood to hear about the review, what kind of plans are being proposed for it to take care of the stormwater, and, and even if we don't require the applicant necessarily, it might not be a bad plan to put that on the agenda, just so you can be here and hear that from our engineer, and, because Ben could explain quite well what the precautions are, what the safeguards are, and what you should see when, when the development's done.
Are you suggesting we continue it, or that we...
No, not necessarily, because as I said, we really don't have the authority to say no to something that complies with our regs. Our authority is to establish the regs and then make people satisfy them. Well, when they do satisfy them, our authority is to approve it. What I'm suggesting we do is, because he's got to go through stormwater review, period, he's got to comply with the city's stormwater regulations, period, and it might be a good idea for the neighborhood then to be able to come back and hear the result of that stormwater review, whether we require Chip to come back or not, we could still have them here, and I'm sure he'd probably wanna be here, but to explain what that review entailed, what steps are then being imposed upon that plan so that the neighborhood can see that we're not just simply cutting loose some floodwater.
We also have to meet with the Royal Springs Protection Commission, the Royal Springs Aquifer, and...
Aquifer.
Yeah, that's not a flooding thing, but that's a water quality thing, so yes, you've gotta satisfy them too. So, so that's why there's just, if you just go back, I don't know, fifteen or twenty years, there wasn't much of this. It was simply what your zoning, build your thing. There's some tremendous safeguards now that we never had before. But again, that might be not, it might be a good public service to then have it back on the agenda after that review is done.
And I think we have a condition that the plan comes back, so...
Well, but then that would take care of it, and then we could allow, you know, get notices to when that's going to be so that can be addressed.
All right, so are there other, others in the audience to speak, or?
Just one question, when is like, you know, they're saying there's flood problems now, so I understand the stormwater bid, is that when it gets hydrotested, the area, to see if it can support it? I mean, is that not part of the plan of building something is to know what is gonna happen?
Sure, that's, that's what the stormwater review, that's exactly what that is.
Not taking the, not, not part of here, not this part here, what you're saying.
Well, it's, it's done by our staff, they've got to present the information, our staff reviews the information to make sure it's accurate, make sure the results are accurate, and then they require whatever safeguards are necessary.
We, we have places probably all over Georgetown, especially small pockets of problem areas for drainage, and, you know, it takes, it doesn't take a few thousand dollars, a lot of times it takes millions of dollars to fix those problems, and we've got other priorities and other things...
I just wondered when, well, that was, you know, to me, I thought that'd be part of the plan, but you're saying, no, you put the plan together first, then you get the testing, and then you modify the plan.
This is a preliminary approval. Before the final approval is done, then that review is done, safeguards are put in place, requirements are put in place, then they come back, staff has recommended they come back for that final approval, and that's what I'm suggesting would be a good time for the neighborhood to come back in and see just what those safeguards are.
That, that happens all over town right now, these, a lot of these larger developments, you don't realize, I think in front of Dollar General store, there's a, all their storm, storm runoff goes into a whole system of caverns underneath their front parking lot, and it's slowly released after a, that's how they, that's how they meet the, that's how they meet the storm runoff requirements for the, the engineers are gonna require. I can't guarantee it's gonna, it's gonna work in this area, because there's a problem there to start with, but I, I would certainly hope that it doesn't make the problem any worse than it is already.
With that being said, shouldn't we continue it until we have that information ourselves? Or can we do that, Charlie?
You know, I, I'm sure you can do it and get away with that, but the basic rule is if they comply with our regs, we have no authority to turn them down. Most places, and I probably shouldn't say it that way, but if every place followed the law, this would be a ministerial act, which means we don't have any discretion at all. Staff would look at it, say, yep, they comply, boom, it's done.
That's exactly right.
We bring it here, that's probably not what we should do. We made the decision years ago that we want the public to hear about it, we want the public here to review it, we want them to be able to gripe if, if there's, you know, gripes that need to be made, because that better informs us and it better informs the public. But ministerial acts are things that, here's your checklist, I've met it, boom. Basically, zone changes are about the only thing we really have discretion on, and that's not entire, entirely discretionary. So, and, and sometimes you gotta wonder, are we really creating a problem, because we give people the opportunity to come in and talk, but then really, there's no opportunity if they're in compliance to do a whole lot extra. But fortunately, we have adopted stormwater standards and a number of other standards in this community over the last few years that put us in so much better shape than we used to be in, because it used to be, it, it was pretty close to a crapshoot. We've been very fortunate through the years. Some places, we still have twelve inch pipes, but that, that can't always be helped either.
And I think too, that most applicants are sympathetic to the, to the neighbors around them, they hear, they hear their concerns and hopefully they'll try to address them. All right, anything else we need to cover?
The gentleman in the back, won't we speak?
I just had a brief question, I'm sorry.
Your, your name, please, sir?
Hank Preston, I live across the street from the property. Is, is the current plan on, on your drawings for the, the entrance and exit to the...
Clayton.
To be kind of synced up with Fort Alley, or is it gonna go right along the, the property?
I think it lines up with...
It lines up. So it's been synced up with Fort Alley?
It was, it was on a picture you had there earlier, I don't know if you can back up to it, but...
We have certain requirements for, for spacing, so he's gonna have to be within a certain distance across from Fort Alley to meet our requirements.
So he cannot sync up, like make that...
That's, that's typically what we would look for, is that there's the proximity of others rather than slightly offset, because that could cause a safety concern.
There was something there showed that.
Maybe that situation's tough.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak, or?
I just had a comment to what Charlie said, you know, I agree with all that, but to me, we as a commission are here to represent, I mean, you know, to hear Mr. Foley and the people that's involved around them. I just think that's what we're here to do, you know, do we have that authority to do that?
You, you can continue it, it's just, it's a little bit, in some ways, it's unfair to the applicant, but it's a...
And we're here to listen to the people, I think we need to take what they have to say in consideration, not to knock Mr. Foley whatsoever, but to me, that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I would feel better if, if Ben was here tonight, I assume he's probably sick, isn't he?
No, he's, he has death in the family.
Oh, did he? He was sounding bad the other day at...
Yeah, he's probably sick.
All right.
Part of the, the stormwater... For the preliminary development plan, we only require a site plan, so that's what you see before you, that's why you're not seeing all the engineered details. That's typically something that Ben reviews, that their engineer works on, it's part of the final development plan, but we are asking that the final development plan does come back before you guys and you approve it. So I would say that it might be better if you wanna give preliminary approval, and then at that final development plan stage, you'll have all those additional engineered drawings that would show all the stormwater management that Ben has reviewed and that he... he's done all the work on. At this point and at this stage, we just typically don't require it. So continuing it might not add to that information, it's more when the final development plan would come back, if that, if that makes sense.
Everybody understand that?
Yep.
They've gotten us to where we don't know yes or no. We see it both ways, no question.
Before they can actually go do all that, before they have the money to pay for all that, but they can't get a final approval to do anything until they bring all that back.
Kind of backwards.
All right, we have.
But through the years, that's the way they've decided to do it.
Tough. Have anybody willing to make a motion to accept this one, to continue it? I'll take any, any motion. In the meantime, there's a fellow commission member hiding in the corner back there, we can bring him back up.
Yeah, if he'll make a motion, we'll bring him up.
I came in middle application, I just came in and I was going to come in for the last one, just, I'll sneak in here, sorry, but I'll abstain of vote because I haven't heard everything.
You haven't heard everything?
Well, with what Kyla said, it's kind of really, to me, or may not be the best thing to continue it, but you, that comes back in front of us too, correct?
Yeah, you can still.
And all the people will have, have that word and they could be back also, correct?
We won't sign off on it until it comes back here and there's a public hearing and notices are sent out and you guys look at it, so.
So there's still been.
When it comes back, as long as they check all the boxes, as Charlie says, there's nothing.
Well, yes, sir, that's true.
It doesn't matter what we come back and say at that point, it's kind of a waste.
No, no, because you'll see what the review has been and what the safeguards are in place. So, as I said, not entirely a waste because you'll then see what the review has entailed and what requirements have been imposed.
Yeah, they may.
We'd like to satisfy both sides, vote both ways, but we're a cop too.
It's a balancing act between the applicant's rights and the residents', the neighbors' rights that are adjacent or nearby, so if you were the applicant, you'd want, you'd expect some courtesy as well and try to, try to be fair to everybody. Anybody want to stick their neck out and make a, make a motion? I'm still looking for one.
Could postpone it for another month or so?
But that still won't get us the review of all, you know, stormwater and all.
Then you don't get any more information than you have right now.
Yeah, we need to get the review done so we can see what all's required.
If you, if you think this is the wrong thing for that corner, then.
No, postpone it if you want to.
Take a motion to deny, to deny, but if you think it's.
It's everything and all the requirements.
What's that?
It also fits all the requirements.
It does. I mean, it meets our requirements at this point, but I know it's, it's not a popular, popular vote.
Our ordinance doesn't have a section that says it's got to be a popular vote.
Right, yeah.
If it did, it'd been thrown out by the courts a long time ago.
Well, I make a motion that we postpone it, and I hate to, but I make a motion that we postpone it till next month or something, maybe give some of us a chance to kind of look it over a little better, think about it a little more.
To continue it or postpone? We just want to continue.
What's the difference?
One more comment, would you be able to let me know?
Yes. I think you want, if you continue it, you.
I would say this, just from an engineer perspective, if you, if you postpone it, that, that doesn't get us any closer to resolving and getting the stormwater management plan completed. You know, this is, this is step one, we have to get past this in order to, okay, we've got a layout that we're going to roll with and, and from that point, then we can start the hydraulic analysis that, that really is going to answer the questions that I think are pertinent. But I'll just stress that, I guess, is that if you, if you delay, if you don't approve the preliminary plan, then we, we're still going to be back to square one again and, and not have any more information for you, so.
I just want to say, I didn't mean to cause a storm up about it. I kind of agree with him, if that's what it takes to get the analysis so that y'all can see it, I mean, I'm in favor for it to go on with at this point too. I just not, did not know when that was done, when we get the information back. I would just say though, if that information comes back, it needs to be waited versus the fact that there is a known problem already. And as part of the planning, you know, if you know there's a problem already, you need to make sure that there's definitely a good way to take care of it. If that's what it takes to get to that next stage of finding out what the problem is and find out what needs to be done, then I, you know, I didn't mean to make it sound like it shouldn't be done, I just, if that's what it takes, let's get it done so that we can find out what it takes to either get this built or not, you know. It's just, I did not know when that took place.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, we got, we.
I see it both ways, therefore I'd like to reject my.
You want to?
Yes.
Resend your, your motion?
Send it, yes.
All right, so we're open for.
Somebody else.
We're open for a motion again.
I'll take back my second then too. I don't make a motion for approval.
We've got a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Can we get clarified whether you want to approve the variance to put it all in one building?
Yes, I think we should, and we also need, you probably want to.
How do you can do, how do you recommend it, staff recommendations?
That's right. The eight.
Yeah, yeah, subject to staff's recommended conditions.
Eight conditions of approval, right. And a variance to allow.
Well, I guess just clarify for staff whether you're.
You want one building or two, is that what you're asking?
Still two buildings, but they're attached by a roof line. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vess, second by Mr.
Garrett.
Garrett, huh. Second meeting.
Or you vote, which, is it two buildings or one?
It's two buildings, but we're considering it connected by a roof.
Well, the proposal doesn't have the breezeway, so if you want the one.
Oh, I understand.
With the breezeway, can I make sure there's one roof?
Do you consider that one building or is there still two buildings connected by a breezeway?
The way that building is connected with you is if that's one building.
Yeah, it's still one building.
Connected by the breezeway.
But, but staff, you don't have any.
So I need to re, redo the.
It'd be the same.
Are you all right with that?
This proposal would require a variance to have it under one.
One roof connected.
It's the same motion, but to grant the variance to have the eight units in one building.
All right. We could ask for a show of hands for the audience, would they rather have two separate buildings or one, one building connected by one roof?
Who wants laptop to sit the one?
I would say, we succeeded in that once tonight, we probably shouldn't try to do it again very often.
All right. Everybody happy with what we got here?
So just one more.
We got, we got.
So it's not back to the original request, right, with the parking lot in the front and a single building in the back, would be parking lot in the rear, single building in the front?
Yes, yeah.
Under one roof.
Yeah, it was shown as two buildings and now it'd be shown one building, they're still separated by a breezeway, but I mean, one roof line. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to recuse myself just because I haven't heard the whole application.
I'll vote no.
One, one no. All right. I'd vote yes, I think we need to.
James was the no vote?
Correct.
We need for the minutes to show that that was the one no vote.
All right, James Stone would be the one no vote.
Yep.
Chip? We thank you. I hope that something good comes out of all this and, and I hope that the stormwater is.
I know you've got.
Maybe better upstream and not any worse.
You should see people trying to write with this thing.
We chipping along, aren't we?
Wow, all these people.
Whatever you want. We probably won't recognize it if you put them, so. Put your date, and then I get the top and you get the bottom.
Actually, it's not just an upstream, I guess a downstream as well.
Yeah. I've been told that too, and I promise.
I'm sorry.
I really wasn't for it.
Oh, yeah.
He meant all, it's like Charlie said, he meant all the requirements.
Chip?
Yeah, when, when people hurt you, I saw three or four already.
Just be different.
We don't, we don't need to get caught in that.
I Cabana.
I know you want.
Understating.
I, I.
I got to fit all this stuff together.
You know, K being dense, people bring us food.
Jump in, you've been running in the meeting, you're doing fine.
Joe.
Look, I let everybody.
I've remembered my other question.
All right. Appreciate everybody's patience, I think we're down to, we're down to Matt's application here. Item G. PDP 2020-06, it's 100 Ichabana Drive.
Yes.
It's a preliminary development plan for 17,559 square foot retail building located at 100 Ichabana.
Thank you. As you mentioned, it's a, this application is for a commercial, a commercial project. The applicant would like to redevelop the site that's at 100 Ichabana Drive. If you all remember, it is the former Golden Corral site. We had an application for this property several months ago that went through preliminary development plan approval. The applicant's proposal involves the construction of one building that would have two tenants. Their proposal shows about 5,600 square feet for a restaurant that would have a drive-thru and then just under 12,000 square feet that would be more of a retail component. The property is currently zoned B5, which is our general commercial park. It's the same zoning that you find on the site to the east that was recently approved for the hotel development, as well as the property to the north of Ichabana Drive where the Planet Fitness and, I guess, other proposed development was approved for. The only other surrounding zone is the property to the south, which is currently Zone B2, which is our highway commercial zoning district. The site's about 1.78 acres in size and the access to it is from Ichabana Drive. Just to, as a reference, we've got Connector Road here, Cherry Blossom is over here, and then we've got Blossom Park Drive and Ichabana Drive. And this area sort of outlined in green here is, is the site. So the, the site isn't proposing, and I'll get to this, I'll show the plan here in a second, but they're not proposing any access to Blossom Park Drive, just access off of Ichabana. I mentioned this before, but this shows the zoning in the, for the site and in the surrounding area here at 100, it's Zone B5, as is all of this surrounding property. There's quite a bit of B2 zone property to the south, and then over here, we have residential where Cherry Blossom starts. This is, this is the site plan for the site. Kind of going through my staff report. You know, I found that as we look at the performance standards that we have for the B5 district, it meets the first five requirements, you know, as far as setbacks, the periphery boundary setbacks, the building coverage. The sixth performance standard has to do with parking, and the applicant is requesting sort of a waiver to the parking typically. We would require one parking space for every 150 square feet of, of commercial floor area. In this case, they, they actually like for us to apply a standard of one space for every 200 square feet. There is a little bit of a, you know, one part of the zoning ordinance talks about one standard to be used for, for sort of general commercial retail and another part uses a different, a different standard. Typically, we would apply the more stringent, which would be the 150, but they've, they've requested that you all approve them for, for the one, one space per 200 square feet. I guess if you, if you look at the, the first page on the staff report, I mean, if we applied the typical standard, they would need to provide about 118 spaces. If we apply the other standard, it would require about 88 spaces for this development. So that's something for you all to, to consider with this project. They are proposing two entrances to the site, you know, one of which here would be sort of on the western side of the property, one on the eastern side. There is a third access point that wouldn't be directly to a street. They are proposing to match the connection to the hotel development that would join to the east. And there are existing sidewalks in the area, so there wouldn't be any, any need for the applicant to construct new sidewalks, who just need to, you know, either leave in place the ones that are there now or if they get, you know, disturbed or broken during construction, they would need to replace those. As far as the, the land use buffers and landscaping that we would require, I found that the, the plan largely met our landscaping requirements. I think there was maybe an issue where maybe some of, they just need to take some trees that they're proposing in other areas and move some of them to the interior landscaped areas, but there's, there's plenty of space for them to do that and I, I think that's, can just be something they, they do with the final development plan when they, when they bring us a species-specific landscaping plan. The proposal is, as drawn, will meet our landscaping requirements. I've actually got, this is the copy of their preliminary landscaping plan that they submitted, so as you can see, there's substantial landscaping buffers that they're proposing around the vehicular use area. It's, it's really just a matter of finding a couple extra spots where they could put some trees interior to the VUA area. So I am recommending ultimately approval of this application, but I did want to talk about, I guess, two additional items before, before we get into the conditions. The first, if you, if you look in the staff report, I did note, or at least I thought I did, oh, no, I didn't, in the background information, if we look at, you know, the size restaurant that the Golden Corral was, we would expect typically for a restaurant of that size to generate 108 AM and 162 PM peak hour trips. And then the, the two retail, well, the smaller restaurant in the retail component that the applicant is proposing would generate 74 and 88 AM and PM peak hour trips respectively. And I wanted to note that just because, and I know that this kind of came up the last time there was an application on this site, somebody could, without coming before this body for any approval, they could redevelop the restaurant that, you know, the restaurant building that's on that site, as long as they're not demoing it and constructing a new building, they could go in and reuse that, that as a, you know, a new restaurant. I know traffic is always a large concern in this area, so I just wanted to point out with the, the actual sort of expected peak trip generation numbers, that this would represent a reduction in the amount of traffic that this site could generate. The other thing that I wanted to mention that, that came up the last time this site came up before the planning commission, was that there was some question about whether or not, you know, trucks could safely make this turn from Blossom Park Drive onto Ichabana and then ultimately into the, the site. I would point out, to the best of my knowledge, this site plan as drawn meets our local requirements as far as how far that entrance needs to be from, from that intersection, and I did pass that concern along to the applicant and I, I think he said he was going to provide an, an exhibit for you all to see that would demonstrate that trucks could in fact make that turn into the site safely. So I'll, I'll let them do that when they get to their portion of the application, but I did want to pass along that, you know, we have thought about those concerns before we, you know, came to our conclusion of recommending approval for this site. I am recommending approval. I, I think it, it is reasonable to grant the waiver. There is a sort of a discrepancy, maybe not a discrepancy, but a conflict in the way that our sub regs and our zoning sometimes describe the appropriate parking for a site. But if, I, I think that there are a lot of cases in our, our parking regs, maybe with the exception of Walmart and Kroger, where our regs do provide more parking than a commercial development needs. Did you have a question?
I've got one question, on the parking for the handicap, are two spaces enough or, or is that?
There's four.
They have, they have four.
Yeah, but two, it's like two.
Oh, two for each, for each side. The, the number of handicap accessible spaces is, is determined by the, the size of the parking lot and the number of parking spaces in general that they are proposing. So I believe that four meets the. So I, I believe that four, uh, meets the, the requirements of, of federal regulation. Yeah. Um, I, so, uh, I, I think that the, the waiver to the parking is, um, is, is agree- I mean, staff is agreeable to that. I think that they will be able to contain the parking on site. I would like to note however that, you know, we do not allow, uh, typically off-street parking, or on-street parking, uh, for commercial development. So, you know, if, if there is an issue with, with parking in future, um, we may need to talk to the applicant about, uh, providing, uh, additional off, off-street parking, um, possibly off-site, uh, with some sort of agreement with a neighboring property owner. The, the conditions that I'm proposing, um, the first three here on this sheet are all standard, um, you know, complying with our regs, um, you know, complying with our stormwater requirements. Um, as far as four and five, those are also very standard, it talks about our sunset clause and things like that. Um, condition six, uh, just clarifies for the applicant that, you know, they need to, uh, comply with all of our regs and, and set up a pre-construction meeting before they do any grading, uh, on the site. Uh, and then con- condition number seven, uh, actually does not belong on this plan. So, uh, please ignore condition, condition seven, that's on the, that's on the sheet there. That actually goes to a different project and was just a leftover when I, when I copied them forward.
Is that everything, Matt?
Uh, that's all that I had, yes.
All right, any questions from the commission, from, from Matt?
Did we ask the previous applicant to make that eight-turn-in-only?
Um, I.
Is that right?
Say that again?
Make that first entrance t- e- turn-in-only?
I think we did.
Well, we couldn't, I thought we couldn't put an island up there because it would disallow, like, if you did a right, uh, right-in-only, right-out-only, you couldn't get a truck in there, so you couldn't put a.
Yeah, there was, um, I went back and, and watched, uh, that, that previous meeting. Um, there was a lot of discussion about that entrance, um, and, um, I guess ultimately what the, what the planning commission, uh, decided was to, uh, have staff work with that applicant, uh, to determine the, I guess, the, the location of the entrance and whether or not it was going to be safe. And then you all requested the final development plan to come back before the planning commission. Um, there was some talk about making it a right-in, right-out, possibly with a, you know, a concrete piece that would, that would guide traffic as such. And, and Mark's correct, uh, you know, the applicant wasn't agreeable to that, uh, because making it right-in, right-out would have made it, uh, nearly impossible for, for a truck to make a turn into the site.
Plus, you wouldn't want to deviate traffic into the subdivision of, you know, you, you need to come out.
Yeah.
Those, your conditions are way different than what we've got on our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm realizing that.
And I just noticed that, they're all.
I can, I mean, I can read them if you want. The, the ones in the staff report are the ones that Charlie has. Um, you know, conditions one through, um, five and number seven are all standard. Condition six in, in the staff report, uh, talks about the species-specific landscaping plan, uh, and, and it talk- goes into that issue I mentioned before about making sure that we've got the appropriate number of trees in the interior V U A areas.
But five, six, and seven, what we have in our.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're different, yeah. I would say disregard the ones on the PowerPoint and go by the ones in the staff report. Yeah. That's, that's my error.
Everybody understand what he just said? Disregard that, go by your.
Yes.
What, what, in your packet. Mark out seven. All right, any other questions for Matt? Ready to hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, my name is Jihad Haldani with Vision Engineering, uh, one twenty-eight Eastern Road, Lexington, Kentucky, four zero five one seven. I just, uh, want to start, I mean, Matt has done very detailed job analyzing the site, and we are in agreement with, but few item I'd like to bring up to your attention is that this site is zoned, has B five zoned for a long time, many, many years, and has been used as, commercial used for many, many years as being the Golden Cor- Golden Corral as a restaurant. And we agree with his, uh, trip generation that, uh, the amount of traffics that that restaurant used to generate, what we are proposing is almost half that volume of traffic. And second, uh, we, uh, we like also to discuss about, uh, the parking. What we are proposing is kinda higher-end, upper-end, the pet store, which is, uh, not only the zoning, the, the way the parking requirement right now, one side of the, of the regulation said, one space for every two hundred square feet, another, the subdivision regulation called for one space for a hundred fifty square feet. So, uh, we, we are supporting our request based on the I T E manual. So for this kinda use of pet store, it has lower requirement of parking, actually slower than the two hundred per square feet. So it's, we are on the conservative side. So that's what our justification is that, uh, that kinda use will require much less parking than even the two hundred per square feet. And then also, uh, if you look at the site, we are, if you compare the existing to the proposed, we have more green space on this side that we are proposing. And then this is, will be, uh, uh, not only, uh, we are confident about the parking requirement, there's also an agreement between us and the next-door neighbor, the, the hotel for, they're going to be busy at night, they're going to be empty during the days, their parking space. So we can, there's agreement between us and them about parking, and also we discuss with them about the new location of the entrance, and they are in agreement with that location. So there have been a lot of, uh, discussion between us and the neighbor to kinda make it nice site. If you notice that, that particular site is in middle of commercial sites, there's commercial all around it, and has been used for commercial use for a long time. And, uh, we're not proposing anything of high-density generating traffic or high-density use. It will be upper-end, higher-end, uh, pet store with nice, uh, with nice restaurant. And also to answer the traffic, I run auto-turn for the biggest truck you can see, it's like fifty-three. Fifty-three feet truck. And then I highlight it in yellow, how does, uh, able to make it in and out? And actually, it can, it can make the circulation in both entrance, so we can use the first entrance or we can use the second entrance. Either way, it will, it will pass. Thank you. So, uh, and then also this, uh, this sketch, basically, I like that the amount of, uh, green space, that's, uh, you can see the amount of island and least, uh, green space that this proposal kind of provide. And, uh, you can see that the truck able to make the fifty, fifty-three feet truck and able to maneuver the whole entire site and get out of it, so. And if you have any question, we'd be glad to answer.
You better come in there early before the long trucks get parked in those diagonal parking spaces.
Yes. Well, I mean, uh, for, for the delivery truck, also not, it can be specified at certain time to have their own delivery, and then can be coordinated and kinda planned ahead. So, uh, the proposed entrances will be thirty-six feet, so that it can have, able to have this fifty-three trucks to able to get in and out, so.
Do you have to just clarify, when the diagonal spaces come in conflict with the turn-in-rig, no sir?
No, sir. Yeah.
What about a truck going out that way where you got it going in?
It's one-way, yes, sir.
It's a one-way.
It's a one-way, sir. And also it can come, again, it can, it either interest, it can make it. And then again, it can be specified at what time that delivery truck can be there and things like that.
Right. Oh, you're saying it's one-way for the trucks, but it's.
It's one-way for vehicular traffic, but for the truck, if they come middle of the mile.
It still go out that same lane. And that would be disaster.
Well, I see.
One-way here.
That's correct.
Where they could turn and go that way and go out if this is blocked.
If this is blocked, yes, sir, they can do that.
That's gonna be tough to get out of.
All right, I'm sorry. Sitting here studying. Any questions for applicant from commission? Anybody from, uh, the audience that wants to speak for or against or ask questions?
Bill Keller, I'm live at, um, one thirty-two Sunnydale. And Cherry Blossom Development. And I spoke here earlier, I think last year, when the Harbor Town or Harbor Freight Group was here. And I understand the whole preliminary concept because they gotta get their site plan done, and they gotta go back. But I'm here just to kinda again, remind this, this committee, this commission, and Mr. Lusby, since he's here and son from the city council, that the more development we keep putting into that area, the worse the traffic gets. And you can give me all those numbers you want from restaurants and how much traffic will or won't be there, and you can confirm that, I don't care. I run restaurants, I can tell you really what, how much traffic goes in and out, and I can also tell you that it's not gonna be right. Before today, or as today started, you approved eighty-nine trailers to be just south of this development. And in order for get them to get back on I ninety, I seventy-five north, sorry, I'm thinking Florida next week, but to get on I seventy-five north, they have to come by that intersection of Blossom Park and Connector Road. And when they get to that point, now that the state has repaved it and we have all these nice yellow markers down there, so people can't do it, we don't have a typical-sized vehicle. These people are hauling trailers anywhere from twenty to fifty feet long. And yet we're told that, and you can't make a left turn out of the Blossom Park intersection. It is a nightmare during peak hours. Mark, you know that because you watch your staff from the bank go in and out. And they all work overtime or all stay late because they don't want to deal with that intersection. And it's great because he gets a little bit of extra help and some chat time with his people. But the reality is, we have forgotten what the ingress egress needs to be. When the state repaved the Connector Road and re-marked it and relabeled it, did a great job except for one intersection, Starbucks. There's no markings in there. So it's a catch can't, catch you as you can, which way do I get in the lane? Do I go straight, do I turn left, do I turn right? And to be honest with you, that should be a right-in, right-out-only at Starbucks. Because when you're fighting that cross-traffic to come out of Blossom Park, you gotta look right dead-eye across the street and make a decision, am I gonna guts it out or not guts it out? And then the car appears, and you have no idea which way they're gonna go, because wheels aren't turned left or they're not turned right.
And darn it, they don't use a turn signal, Bill.
Well, it, it doesn't come on American cars.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay? I went through the process of looking at this thing, and every time I come to this commission, or to somebody else, they go, oh, it's a state highway, it's their problem, we gotta get the state to do something. It's too close Blossom Park to Cherry Blossom Way. Well, I'm gonna tell you, it's not too close. It's two-tenths of a mile. Now go over to I seventy-five exit southbound, and you come off with a light on the Cherry Blossom Way, and the next light down at Speedway or Darby Street is two-tenths of a mile. Travel from that intersection down to the next intersection, which happens to be Champions Way, that's another two-tenths of a mile. And then you go from Champions Way down to, uh, Dan Cummins', uh, Chevrolet, and the Firehouse Street, and that's three-tenths. So what part of two-tenths do we not understand? And I'm gonna ask you all in the commission to help us, the city council, start pushing the state to put in a light that works during peak hours. We don't need it at this time of the night, because quite honestly, there's no traffic on Connector Road. We don't need it at five A M. But we do need it during the day, if we're gonna have semi-trucks going into restaurants and into pet stores and other things. School buses going into the back of the Haddix Development that's going in behind this whole development area, delivery trucks going into the Marriott. And quite honestly, we're just adding to it. The next group will come in here and say, hey, we wanna do ten or fifteen acres over on this side of the development. And no matter how you look at it, this property, and I bless them, they're taking that restaurant down because it's becoming an eyesore, probably more for you than me. But the reality is, is that this thing is adding two or three hundred more cars a day. Whether it is or it isn't. A fifty-six hundred square restaurant with a drive-through window, have no idea what it is. Oh, that's like really off.
It's a little smaller than your restaurant.
Yes, I was gonna say, because mine are three thousand square feet, and I'm trying to imagine what you're putting in there for fifty-six hundred square feet. But in any case, it's still gonna add volume. And I just ask you all to at least collectively as a commission, to at least petition to the state, you gotta do something with this. Maybe Joe's department can do something with that. But we gotta get some movement on this thing. I think they did a great job marking it, but it's, as we develop more, it's not adequate enough. Thank you.
I agree with you there, I think it should have never been a, a turn-in right there directly across from that, in, into Starbucks. But that's, that's watering the bridge. Go ahead.
I'm David Lusby, I'm, uh, partners with Matt Welch, uh, we're, we're the new owners of the, uh, of the property, the old Golden Corral building. And, uh, I understand what Mr. Keller is, is, uh, saying. We have concerns with the traffic on that road as well. And certainly when the state came in and, and repaved and they, they changed the, the traffic flow in front of Applebee's, that, that's kinda changed the situation. From the city perspective, we challenged that. We weren't in, in favor of exactly what they did. We had another plan that we thought would be better, but it's the state road and, and they, they made their, their say, and they, they did what they wanted to do. But what they did tell us, the, the engineers with District Seven told us that this situation needed to continue to develop more before a traffic light could be added. That it wasn't merited or warranted, there's a term that they use, I'm sure you all are familiar with.
Enough load.
Joe is as well.
Yep.
That, that things like this needed to take place in order to justify a light at this intersection. So Matt and I, you, you know Matt and I, we've, we've been involved, involved with a lot of projects. Uh, we were interested in this property back when Harbor Freight was, was got the contract. They outbid Matt and I on this, on this piece of property. And we were concerned with Harbor Freight, we didn't want, I mean, I, I live in the neighborhood. I, Pat'll tell you, I've tried to help the neighborhood as much as anybody possibly could, and I have, I know that. And Matt and I want to continue that theme. Uh, we wanna take this piece of property that's essentially a condemned piece of property, it's in really bad shape. I mean, could it be remodeled? Possibly so, but it's, it's, it's bad because it's, it's set empty, hasn't had any heat or any cooling, it's got a lot of mold in it, just a lot of issues. So our plan is to take it down and replace it with something that's, that's extremely nice and obviously very modern, and something appropriate with what he and I tend to develop. And as, I think most of you know, we developed the, the Kroger Shopping Center. We developed the Landmark Office property across the road, where, uh, UK Central Baptist and various other businesses exist. And Mr. Keller is, is one of those. And, uh, we've continued to make improvements there, parking as, as he knows. Uh, we've been involved with the Windsor Gardens Assisted Living Facility. We took the old Walmart building behind your other store, that was just a white box, and we turned it into something that's, you know, pretty nice, where me casita is and Elite Fitness, and, uh, turned it into an economically viable piece of property that's good for the community as opposed to a, just a blight. We wanna do the same thing here, and we certainly would love to have everyone's support, and I really want the neighborhood's support. And, uh, you know, Matt and I want to be proud of this. We're gonna spend more money on this building than probably anybody would consider doing because we're local. We live here in the community. And for us, it's, it, it, it's kind of a challenge. I mean, certainly, the goal is to make a little bit of money at the end of the day, but we absolutely want to be proud of our projects, and we wouldn't do it otherwise. And, uh, we're looking forward to this project. We've got a, a relationship with the Marriott Hotel that's going in next door, and, and, and as, as Jihad mentioned, uh, you know, their peak traffic is gonna be at night, and ours is gonna be more during the day. So the parking issue really isn't gonna be an issue. And the tenant that we're working on to bring here, that I think you're gonna be delighted with, um, their traffic flow isn't significant. It's nothing compared to, to the Golden Corral or a fifty-six hundred square foot restaurant. We've only got a sixteen hundred square foot restaurant. There's a little bit of additional space left in the building, and, you know, we'd love to get some professional office, something medical-related in there if we could. That's our goal, that's what we're working towards. So we'll be glad to answer any questions, but I wanted to just kinda tell you what the state told us is that things like this needed to continue before that light would be more justifiable. And we'll do everything we can, we've got a state senator that lives in our neighborhood.
I was gonna say, we need to get Damon.
We need to get everybody involved, and I've been involved, I've been on the phone with District Seven. I've challenged him, I got Joe Pat Covington on the phone with our judge, and I know the mayor is. our judge, and I know the mayor is interested, we're all interested in it. We just all need to work together with the state and try to get it done. So I'll leave it at that.
Before you sit down, I just, for, for record's sake, because everything I read in here says the restaurant's fifty-six-hundred, it's only sixteen-hundred.
That's correct.
Because everything, all the blueprints, including Jihad's, say fifty-six-hundred.
Right, right.
No, no problem, just so, just for the record.
No problem.
And then the other side of the building's eleven thousand nine ninety-nine.
And that could change a little bit, okay? I mean, we don't think the footprint's gonna change too much, but, you know, those dimensions are kind of in discussion right now.
Okay, thanks. I didn't wanna keep getting you up and down, because...
Anybody else to speak from the audience?
I'm not beating a dead horse. I'm Patricia Fannin, I'm president of the Cherry Blossom Village Homeowners Association. I've been here many times to talk to you all about the traffic. And we're very happy, I just learned this evening, that David and Matt are involved in this project, and we're very happy about that because we know it'll be a premier place. But we do need to, I mean, we talk about this every time we come here, but we do need to start getting people together to go to the state transportation cabinet, whatever they are, and just present a plan to them. We've talked about roundabouts there to slow the people down, and I am very concerned about this RV place down the street now, you guys just approved that tonight. It is gonna add a, a lot of big, big vehicles to our area, and it is a very, very dangerous place to pull out and try to get wherever you're going. They put the quick curbs up, it's made it worse. You sometimes cannot see those cars coming at you during the daytime, you know, if they're the same color as the background there, you, all of a sudden, there's a car coming right at you, and before we could at least see them, and now, they're there, if you wanna turn left and get out of there. So I don't go to coals or lows very much anymore because of that. But I just wanted to go on record, I had many, many emails from people, I sent out a notice to the neighborhood and some of them showed up, but I had a lot of emails from people, and they said, what are we gonna do about the traffic? So I don't know if we just have to get people mobilized to go over there in groups and take a bus or something, and just go tell them, hey, you gotta come and help, or somebody's gonna get killed there. And that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
And once again, I hope that if numbers make a change, we've got three big projects going in right now with Marriott, and this one is to occur, and, and Bluegrass Campground, there's gonna be a lot of additional traffic on there, I think the state's gonna have to make, make some changes.
There's a lot of homes for sale at Cherry Blossom, by the way. That aren't selling. That aren't selling. That aren't selling.
One more?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Linda Angel, and I live there on Spyglass, and I've lived there now one-on-seventeen years, so I've been there pretty much from the beginning and seen a lot. I live right behind Planet Fitness on the corner, so I get to see a lot of the light, and I hear the twenty-four-seven operation of Planet Fitness and the people going to and from. Just wanna add to the story here about the traffic, it's unreal. I feel like I've just retired from Toyota, and I feel like a prisoner of my home, because I have to time myself on going out, okay, I'm going, I gotta be out and I gotta be back before two forty-five PM, because if not, I won't be able to get down Connector Road. I'll be backed up by Burger King. So, I mean, I feel like a prisoner of my home, and I'm planning to sell my home, but as we just mentioned, homes are not selling, so I'm probably gonna take a, a rather large loss on my home. I don't want that. I do like Georgetown, but I think there needs to be some kind of happy medium. I do agree, a growth is good, but also, there has to be some kind of happy medium between the growth and being able to handle the community and the numbers that it's generating and the volume of traffic that it brings in. The two forty-five, when Toyota lets out, that traffic is all the way backed up on Cherry Blossom down by the new interstate, you know, the interchange that goes to the interstate, it's backed up all the way down there. I know, I used to be in that traffic, well, my, I was in administration, so I was later than that, but I know what it's like, and I see people, and they're flying like bats out of hell to get out of there, and you all know, people do, they do the same thing going in. But the traffic has just gotten off the top, and I, you know, I think there needs to be some kind of happy medium. I don't know, Woodsby ever became of the, the growth to get the, to take the new road there off Cherry Blossom all the way to four sixty, because you've got people coming from Toyota that's going to Millersburg, Paris, Maysville, whatever, and that's just bringing more people to that, and then the RV park, just the size of that and the times. So I just really want to reiterate, like these folks say, and we've got to do something about traffic. It's going to, it's gonna cause a lot more problems, and people will begin to leave Georgetown, you know, and they'll go, I don't even wanna go over on that side of town because it's too crazy. So thank you all for listening, and I just hope you all that something can be done. Thank you for hearing me.
Joe, is Lexus Way, doesn't, that, well, that won't go all the way to four sixty, it'll only go to Oxford, Old Oxford, okay? That would help a little bit.
If and when that, yeah.
As we keep growing, roads keep being put through, but, you know, it, traffic's gonna always be traffic. We won't be, I don't think we'll be Lexington anytime soon.
No, I know that, but I know we've talked about that road, you know, going Lexus Way connecting, but then you hear, oh, these people, you know, they can't do it because they're bankrupt, or it has to go before this, you know, or there's two people that are doing this, homeowners or whatever, you know?
We've made two, six, eight grand requests in regards to Lexus Way and Old Oxford, and both of them are corporately defined of this town, but it, it's a priority, it's just gonna take months.
Well, it just seems like there just gotta be some kind of balance, you know, we want, we want all this growth, and Georgetown is a wonderful place, you know, but it's getting where it's, like, it's just a nightmare to live on this end of town, you know, you think, gosh, I don't even wanna get in line to go to Kroger's, or can I get out to go anywhere else, you know? Or to Walmart, I don't wanna go to Walmart, you know, I wanna go somewhere else, you know? Well, anyway, thank you all, appreciate it.
I'm not even sure what the, what the number is now, I know when, when Toyota came here, there was about three thousand employees, and I think now there's probably eighty-five hundred, and then...
Eighty-five, plus, and plus they're looking down four hundred more for the ride for.
That, and also, a lot of engineers moved into the offices over there that, that didn't go to Texas, so...
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to kinda add on to what David mentioned earlier. By the way, my name is Matt Welch, I'm one of the partners on the project with David Lusby. And I, I wanna make sure that it's, that we stress to you, and you know this, we're, we live right next door, and it is, we're not snowing out of state, this is important to us. And honestly, the traffic light would be very beneficial to us as well. But, but more so, I want you to consider that this building has been boarded up and, and shuttered for several years. And what happens in these type of scenarios is that these buildings breed curiosity to more, more often than not, kids. And that curiosity tends to lead to, you know, poor choices and bad behavior. And the building's been broken into several times, we've found evidence of poor decisions on the floor inside that building, and, look, all we're really trying to do, and at the end of the day, is, is, is to...
Get rid of blighted.
Rip that down and, and, and get rid of the blight, and build something that I think we can all be proud of. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and...
I think we all can agree that there's a traffic problem through there, but I still don't think we've, we're nowhere near Lexington's proportions of traffic problems, but that's probably some of the worst right in that area. Anybody else wanting to speak from the audience?
While they're thinking of that, the president of the HOA, what's your name again?
Patricia Fannin.
Well, that's what I thought, but I wasn't gonna check you off until you said stuff. Thank you, ma'am.
You can check me off.
Mine's just a statement to Bill and Mrs. Fannin and Mrs. Angel, is I, I agree with you all, we do need a light there, and I've asked and wanted a light the nine years I've been there at the bank. And it'll come eventually, I'm hoping. There's several places in town that need lights, David's aware of it, he knows. And we just keep getting, we keep asking, and Frankford keeps telling us no. And like you said, I'm hoping it won't take somebody dying at that corner, or my neighborhood, I live in Bradford, Hemmingway's a nightmare coming off the bypass, and until somebody gets killed there, and, and a gentleman was here a couple of years ago from Frankford Department of Transportation, said, well, that's not how it works, and I, I told him I would be there once somebody died, and they put a light in because that's exactly what it's gonna take for, for sometimes to get a light, which is unfortunate.
Mr. Chairman, we're not, we beat this dead horse all the time.
I know, I know we do.
We're here to approve or disapprove this thing, so I...
Well, you make a motion, Mr. Wiseman.
Oh, did, was there somebody else? I thought we were, I didn't think there was anybody else.
I'm Kim Fields, I just wanted to say something, I mean, I'm happy and excited for a restaurant, and I live on Spyglass, I'm Kim Fields, and, but I just wanted to say something about, when you all done the Planet Fitness, you know, I know that it's been commercial property for twenty years, okay? And I've said this once before, you know, Lowe's or none of these places was in there on Connector Road when that was commercial property. It has grown and grown and grown. We all, we set vacant, and then all this stuff has come around, and there's been more traffic, and then you've let Planet Fitness go into there, that is a twenty-four-hour, seven-days-a-week thing. And I read something, and I couldn't find the paper, but I thought that that was set up, that it was supposed to be a little bit more protected commercial property, because it was buffered next to residential property, and that it was to be looked at in the best interest of the property. There's something, when this was done twenty years ago, I got a copy of it, I just couldn't find it to bring it tonight, that you all, that, that the committee was in the best interest of the neighborhood as well.
I can tell you, with the exception of our attorney, none of us were here twenty years ago.
Oh, I know that.
And Charlie's too old to remember that far back.
I can't, I can't remember that.
I know that, but I just wondered if you all have seen it, because I haven't, somebody sent it to me. But, but, but my point is, you all let something come in seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and it shouldn't have been. I wasn't for Planet Fitness from the get-go. It should've been a small mom-and-pop businesses that would've been nine-to-five, nine-to-six or whatever, not twenty-four-seven. But in addition to what you've done, there's tractor-trailers coming in, in the, uh, Planet Fitness, that you all aren't aware of this, because you don't live there and you don't know. I do, I see it. These people are memberships in Planet Fitness, they come and use it as a truck stop to come and share, rest, and sleep. And there's been two trucks sometimes at night parked on Blossom Park outside of Planet Fitness. So when you all let a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week business come in, these trucks are coming in from all over. There was one this morning from Oklahoma. So when I come out of the subdivision at seven o'clock in the morning, sitting on Blossom Park is a tractor-trailer. Many times I've come in, and there's two sitting, one at the below entrance of Planet Fitness on this side and one on this side. And I've got pictures of every one of them, and it's been happening since September. And I've been talking to the committee, and they're gonna, supposed to put signs up that there's not gonna be any parking on there. But I'm just saying, when you let these businesses and stuff like it come in, all this extra traffic, in addition, these big truck traffic, semis that come, like I said, from all over, that wasn't expected, but we are putting up with it. We are the ones who live with it. We, we travel and we dodge these trucks, and now you got a four-way traffic thing, basically, because you got them coming out of Cherry Blossom, you got Ichabod, you got the new Planet Fitness road, and then you're going to Connector Road. We have a big congested area on our street before we even get to Connector Road, you know? And then the people that don't live in the neighborhood, we have to deal with that traffic on top of it. So we that live there, and especially the ones that live on Spyglass, are the ones suffering and getting it. There have been two houses on Spyglass that has been tried to sell for a year, they took them off and on the market. They can't give them away on Spyglass. The one on Blossom Park that sold last year, it probably sold for thirty thousand or less than what it was priced for. They sold it to get rid of it. They're not moving. But as far as in the rest of the neighborhood, the houses, yeah, they're selling the ones on the golf course and stuff, but it has really crippled the street of Spyglass and Blossom Park, and then you got Riviera and Ichabod, that is the ones that it is affecting. But I just, I just wanted to make a statement that what Planet Fitness and the traffic that has come that you all weren't aware of, and you don't see, and you don't know, only us who live there are getting to see it. And I'm right on the corner, one-on-one Spyglass, so I see it, and then Planet Fitness, you know, we talked about the lighting. I know we're not here to talk about Planet Fitness, but I'm just talking about in general stuff that was supposed to have been done. The lighting was supposed to stayed on the building of it, and it wasn't supposed to be out. There was nothing mentioned about them putting, uh, streetlights and lining the property perimeter and lighting it up like a baseball field. So where it's seven days, twenty-four hours a day, we have a light dome in the neighborhood of the area, so... But I just wanted to state that what's happened after the fact, when you've let things like this happen, that there's more to come that, that's not been said, and we don't know to after it's in. But I mean, I'm, I'm all for, I mean, I could walk to a restaurant, I'm glad to see Georgetown getting out of them. I wish that it was Texas Roadhouse going there at Golden Corral, you know? But, but we do have some problems in our neighborhood that need to be addressed.
Probably, we need to take a look at it, and then if the Marriott gets built, and this project gets built, and everybody can agree that the lights on Planet Fitness are too bright, then it might have to change.
Well, I mean, we've addressed that, and they've put, they've put guards on some of them, but it is still lit up like a baseball field. And then, we had mentioned, Pat, I know you asked, and I don't think they ever agreed to it, about the color and stuff, and we got Barney Purple big corners and purple lights. Lexington is all tan, and, and you can't see it lit up, you know, but I just think that some things didn't happen the way it was supposed to when it was proposed to us. So I'm skeptical about that.
I've noticed things, not, not just here, you drive down, if you drive down New Circle Road, this, since LED lights came out, they're much, much brighter, they're, I mean, they light things up like the sun.
Yeah, yeah, so... But I mean, I'm just, I'm just sharing some concerns as, in general, with the neighborhood, the area.
All right.
Can we have restrictions, that we imposed on them, or are we not enforcing those?
It's another one of those things, kind of...
And our requirements should be different.
I mean, we could ban LED lights, I guess.
Lighting is hard to...
But it's an alumines, it's not, not watts, is it?
If you ban LED, that's considered green lighting, which then you have utility companies on your back.
Right.
But they still need to... I'll be honest, I have LED lighting in my bank, and it's so much nicer for the safety of the people. Come, somebody coming through my drive-thru, I'd rather be lit up than dark, and I've gone, per Mrs. Angel, and Joe and I did this, at night, and stood on the corner of that fence line, and if it gets much darker, I'll be honest, I wouldn't be, wanna be a woman walking past that fence at night.
Well, my bedroom is in the back, and I have five windows, and I have a large palladium window, and it's up high. All the lights come through there.
We do have to get back on task, though, and talk about the application, and Planet Fitness is a done deal, I mean...
We're just talking about general stuff in the neighborhood.
Appreciate you.
Can I ask one question? David, I didn't have on the list that's sworn in, Ms. Fields, I didn't have the list that's sworn in. Do you both swear or affirm?
Yeah.
He did.
You stood up, you just didn't sign the list. Thank you, too, well, I put you both down, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody else to speak on this application?
I think Mr. Wiseman.
I think we got a little off course, but those sounds like, those are all concerns that we need to think about in this whole area. Anybody willing to make a motion?
No, I don't wanna make a motion.
I thought you wanted to.
Let's get on with it, is all I was saying.
You're up to date on this one?
I am up to date, so, so I can get, on the minutes, I'll make a motion. And again, with the neighbors, I think Mr. Lusby and Mr. Welch do a great job with those buildings. Eventually, hopefully, a light will come sooner than later. I think they'll do a great job, and I think it'll be pretty. So I'll make a motion...